Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Delray Beach's regular commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January 10th, 2023 at 4:00 p.m. We are at 4:40, a few minutes late. Please call the roll.
Mr. Frankel.
President.
Ms. Gossel.
Here.
Mr. Boylston.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Petrollia.
Here. And if we could all stand for the pledge, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're at agenda approval. Any changes, additions, deletions?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Do something, please. I always, and it's gotten to be a habit with me, anything that's over 200,000, I usually like to discuss it. 6B.
6B. 7AA. Anything else?
Hang on one second. May I look at my notes, please?
Yes, you may.
Just a little before I just...
Yep, go right ahead.
Yes, because it's so important, I'd like to just take a few moments to talk about 6.F.1.
6.F.1, Martin Luther King Day. You want to bring that to 7?
7.
AAA. You want to do that first?
I can.
All right, let's do that. Get that out of the way. Anything else?
No, I did have a question on 6C, but I think it's just perfunctory, right?
Okay, thank you, I don't.
I'm going to pull 6A for discussion as well, and this will be 7BB. It'll be quick. Anything else? Seeing no one, entertain a motion with the changes.
Motion approved as amended.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Gossel.
Yes.
Mr. Boylston.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Okay, moving on to our presentations. Well, we are finally excited and welcoming to the Delray Rocks being here. We've been waiting for you to come in, so thank you. Mr. Sam Mietot will lead the charge in this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Sam Mietot, Director of Parks and Recreation. As you know, for these fun ones, I turn it over to Prentice Mobley, our Recreation Superintendent. He does a great job introducing this crew. So, before we get started, congratulations to the Rocks, and we'll bring up Prentice.
All right.
Happy New Year, everyone.
To you.
How y'all doing? Prentice Mobley, Recreation Superintendent, Delray Beach. It's always a pleasure for me to be up, to come up here and speak on some of the great things that's going on in our community. And the Delray Rocks organization is one of those great organizations that have been doing this over 50 years. So first and foremost, before I get into the specific teams, I just wanted to say congratulations to the organization for being there, being a staple in the community, and all the kids who participated, even though they didn't win Super Bowls, they did give their best effort, they came to practice, they committed to something, and at the end of the day, that's what we try to do. We try to build leaders, male and female athletes, mold them so they can come back into the community like someone like me, and give back to the community, and pour into young people, just like all the coaches and volunteers and team moms pouring into you guys. So that's first and foremost, I wanted to get that straight before I get into these specific teams, all right? So, once again, we're here to celebrate the Super Bowl champion, 8U, 12U, and the cheerleaders of the Delray Rocks organization in 2022. So as you can see up here, it says we are the show, because it's very exciting to watch these teams when they come aboard and play their games, well-coached, well-organized, and just a great group of kids. We're going to start off with the young guys. We're going to start off with the 8U. They are back-to-back Super Bowl champions. We was actually up here not so many months ago honoring them.
Absolutely.
They are back-to-back undefeated Super Bowl champions. And, man, this group is kind of special to me, because I remember them when they were in, when I was working at Pompeii Park, we had a diaper sports program, and some of the coaches can attest to that, when they were three years old, four years old, and that's when they were just getting introduced to the sport. And since then, I knew they was a special group, but I didn't know they would come aboard and win Super Bowls.
Wow.
So it's not just 6U, 7U, 8U. So we were going for 9U, right, gentlemen? And so we're so very proud of them. Like I said, undefeated, haven't had a loss in two years. And they went with class, no showboating, they just humble kids, and they're dual athletes, a lot of them participate in our other sports, track, basketball, but they have a great set of coaches. Coach Eric Davis is the head coach. He's not here today, but we do have some of his coaches. Coach Jeff Blanchard is also here, and some of their staff is here that contribute to that. So kudos to them for continuing to pour into these kids. That's the 8U.
Thank you.
Can we have them stand up?
Sure. You want to stand up, guys?
Stand up, fellas.
All y'all stand up, so everybody can see you in the back. There you go, very good.
Yeah. And even with that, they are, I'm glad that they're here, because it's tough, you know, the four o'clock start with school getting out at a certain time.
Yes, it is.
And that affected our 12U team, but they're here representing, so I'm going to get them.
Big shout out to Coach Davis. I know he wasn't able to make it, so...
Yes, yes. He sends love. When he was here, they had their banquet yesterday, so I spoke to them, and they had a great banquet at Pompeii Park yesterday. No, I'm sorry, Sunday. I'm sorry, how would it be yesterday? Today's Tuesday. Yes, Sunday, and it went very well, and I spoke to him, so he, you know, he already let us know we weren't going to be here, so, you know, the organization knew. So he sends his love.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to get into the 12U. This team right here, they actually, their head coach, Coach Hot Rod, actually won the Super Bowl at 8U as well. So, you know, it's kind of good for them to get to 12U. I have up here redemption, because they played a season and they lost the game. You know, they had one loss to a team, and they ended up playing that team back in the Super Bowl, and they were able to beat them and win the Super Bowl. So that's why you see redemption up there, because they've learned to persevere and get that win. Great comeback, too. Great comeback. And that team they be haven't lost a game in three years. So, you know, it's a new champ in town. So hopefully, that group goes to 13U.
They have now.
Yes. You ain't been hit till you been hit by a rock. Get what I'm saying? All right? And then also, you know, we're going to highlight the Delray Rocks cheerleaders, because as you know, Delray Rocks organization is boys and girls, and, you know, it's inclusive to everyone. And our cheerleaders, they won the grand champions for their 13U, first place. 12U was third place, and 8U for their second place. You know, it's not as big as wins as they had, but they always win, because they're participating, they're there representing Delray to the state of Florida, and just being great statesmen and stateswomen for our city. So we're very proud of them, that's the Delray Rocks cheerleaders. Coach Kim Phillips is our cheerleader over our cheerleaders. I don't see her here today, but she does an excellent job.
How many cheerleaders? I mean, it looks like a tremendous number.
Yes, they have 13U. Well, just like the football team, they start at six and they go all the way up, and I think they may have some minis that they have some in training.
Wonderful, that continue to stay engaged.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, and I don't want to end this presentation without, you know, also thanking the Delray Rocks Board and their president, Mr. Bernard Wright, who is here, Vice President Terrance Thomas, and they're all... It's not an easy job when you have an organization that's been going over 50 years to keep up with the times, to keep up with the trends, and continue to hold on to that tradition, and be one of those programs that throughout the year, you are staple. You represent, you know, class, you represent, you know, the standard for AYFL. And a lot of teams try to mimic what we provide here in Delray Beach, and it's a big task, and the board, along with us, working together, has continued to keep that tradition alive. So shout out to the board, shout out to them, very appreciative of them. So with that being said, you know, I'll turn it over to you guys, but that's my presentation. Congratulations, 8U Delray Rocks, 12U Delray Rocks. We love you.
Congratulations. I have one question. I have one question. Mr. Prentice.
Yes, ma'am.
If you mentioned the gentleman in the corner, I missed...
Right here, this is the 12U coach. This is Coach Hot Rod. This is Rodney.
Very good, Coach.
Yes, Roger. This is the 12U coach. Come on, Coach. Come on up here, Coach.
Talk about your young men. And I want someone to show me those rings that supposedly everybody got.
Oh, yeah, they have them.
The children, the young men.
Cam Bam, you got yours on. You want to show the ring?
The ring is bigger than your finger.
Cam, go show. Now, I don't need it. I'll take it, but... Go show Commissioner Johnson.
You got to bring that around.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness.
That's Cameron Goff.
Oh, wonderful. It's heavy.
I don't...
Grand son of the owner.
Oh, my goodness.
Want to take a look?
It is heavy.
It's huge. Don't go anywhere, we're going to get it back to you, because somebody might take it.
Ow.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations, guys.
Okay, but like I said, this is the head coach of the 12U, and this is, you know, one of the top assistants, and standing in the gap for Coach Davis, Coach Blanchard. So, thank you guys for coming.
I'd like the 12U coach to say just a word, because when they get to be that age, it's awfully difficult to get them to continue doing something. That age, they just want to get out there and play. But when you are 12 years old, and it's all 12, you can't be 13 or 11.
Well, there's, you know, they have some age limitations. Before I let him talk, because, you know, he's a shy guy, and I know I'm going to give him some wind real quick. I'm going to let him speak. But this gentleman right here, I can tell you, this guy right here, we've had some, going to your point with that age group, we had some issues at the schools with some of the kids, not...
Middle school.
You know, because middle school, we know how it goes, you know, they're feeling themselves. And, you know, I was tasked to go out there and put a group together to try to mentor and get with some of the kids. One of the first guys I called was this coach right here. He didn't hesitate, he was there, and as soon as he hit the campus, it was like, you know, Elvis Presley on campus. "Coach, coach, coach." He said, "Nah, not coach, coach, coach. What you doing? You know, why your name on this list? You know, we don't, that's not the standard." And all Rocks coaches has always done that.
And where are your grades? All right.
Where your grades at? But I'm going to let him speak, I just wanted to set him up nice.
Okay.
I bet he's not shy on the field.
No, I'm not. How y'all doing?
Great.
I just want to say, I came up playing for Delray Rocks when I was younger, and the coaches mentored me, so I just took it, like, I've been coaching like six, seven years, so I got in the same group, I had these kids since they were six, so I basically like molded them and treated them like my own, you know, even for the other kids around the neighborhood, I tried to mentor and make sure they stay on the right track. But at the end of the day, I preach grade first, you know, grades first, football second. So my kids can't be here today, because they still in school, they're testing, but I'm here, and great group of kids, great group of kids, and I want to just say thanks to the whole city of Delray for being behind us and supporting us, so...
Make sure you send a congratulations from the Commission to your students that weren't able, to your players that weren't able to be here tonight.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
The biggest thing, I'd like just to say, the hardest problem we seem to have, and I'm sure our Ed Board will back me up, when they get past the elementary school and they go to the middle school, that's when we lose our children. If they can make it to high school, oh, well and good, that's the older, whatever, you really dedicate it, but we lose so many boys especially, the young men at that age. So if you can give them any kind of incentive to continue, as you did, so I'd love to talk with you later to see what your secret is. Thank you.
Another thing is like, I just, pretty much, you know, my phone is always open for my parents, so they call me anytime. They know, as soon as they see me, the kids, they get in line. They, all they got to do is say, they calling Coach Hot Rod.
Should give you a job there.
Yeah, I'm working on it, I'm working on it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Again, congratulations.
I don't know if they want to come up and take a pic or not, or no?
You can, if there's somebody here to take one.
We have some kids, the 8U, you guys want to go take a picture? Oh, you got your rings, or you got your medals, or go ahead, it's your time to shine. Maybe the whole group, because since we got Coach.
You guys want to stand down here, and then we'll stand up back here if you want us in the, if you want us in the picture? All right, sounds good.
Coach.
That's right.
Come on up.
Rings out front.
Coach T, if you got a Rock shirt, you might as well, you guys are coaches, so go ahead and make it juicy.
Judges, want to come?
Here we go, got another couple.
That's great. One day, there might be Super Bowl-type dokes.
There we go, one more, one more coming in.
Okay, you go again.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, so...
Ready, three, two, one. Again, three, two, one.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, guys. Good job.
That's right, absolutely.
All right, moving on to 4B, which is the direction and discussion for our legislative priorities, and this would be Mr. Oris leading with Mr. Matt Forrest. Hi, Matt.
I'm stuck in traffic.
That's all right.
Good evening.
Evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This is a fairly simple item, but what it is, is I'm here to show you some of the requests that we're looking at for appropriations, and our state lobbyist from Ballard Partners, Matt Forrest, is here to give you an update on where he sees the legislature going in some of the items. I'm not really positively sure the best way to do it. What I'm going to do, though, is I put up on the board, and this is in your backup as well, these are the appropriation requests that staff has put forward. Would like you to just take a look at these, we're happy to answer any questions on them. But what I'm also requesting is that you...
Moved it off.
I don't know how that happened. There we go. And what it is, I'm asking that you give the administration and Mr. Forrest the ability to kind of maneuver with these requests, to put forward the best ones ultimately, that we think the legislature will fund. We do have a number of requests, as you recall, last year, four of our requests were funded. That was a big, big grand slam for us.
It was.
But we want to make sure we put forward those that are most likely to be funded. Of those on the list, I could tell you, we do have one issue that jumps out at me right off the bat, is fire rescue, just because that project is not going to happen very quickly. The legislature generally wants appropriations to come forward on projects that will happen in about a year and a half after the money's allocated, and it doesn't look like that will happen. But we will go through the rest, again, with your blessing, and try to work as we get to the legislative session on those that are most likely to be funded. If any questions, I'm happy to answer them after. I want to get Matt up here and give you the update on session, your opportunity, and as well, you can suggest some additions to this if you'd like, and we'll bring Matt up here now, and he's right behind me.
Thanks, Jeff.
Matt.
Hello, good afternoon. For the record, Matt Forrest with Ballard Partners, representing the city of Delray Beach. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Normally, you guys see me like after the session. This is novel, we're coming there ahead of time. So we're definitely just ramping up. Things in Tallahassee are definitely, though, moving very quickly towards the start of the legislative session. Literally hit the ground running in Tallahassee on January 2nd, and I'm happy to be back this week, and then back up there for the next two weeks. Wanted to give you a really big picture where we are on the timeline. I think it's always important to kind of remember where we are, and I know you guys have a lot going on just in your own city, so this is why you have us, to keep track of things. This is the start of a new two-year cycle in Tallahassee. So the election just happened in November, new Speaker of the House, new Senate President, all new committee chairs, and also because of the first time in the redistricting process, new districts. So Delray Beach is in a new district for new House members and a new senators. You are now in House District 90, which is represented by Joe Casello, Democrat from the Boynton Beach area. This now covers the entire city of Delray. You may remember, previously, Delray had a kind of like three districts that kind of overlapped them. The new districts completely cover the entire city. Same thing with your Senate district, Senate District 26, you were represented by Senator Lori Berman. Again, both of us know the members very well, you know them, but I think it's important to remember that you're no longer, before I would look at projects and find out which district they fall in and who this might go under, they're all going to be in Representative Casello's district or Senator Berman's district. But I still might farm it out and look at some of the projects and get some help from the rest of the delegation, just to broaden things out. Also, in case you hadn't heard the news, the red wave did not hit the U.S., but it hit Florida. There is now a Republican supermajority in the House and in the Senate. There are 28 Republicans in the Senate, 12 Democrats, 85 Republicans, 35 Democrats. So that's going to change maybe a little bit of how they see the process working out up at the legislative level. The big changes, of course, are those, the districts, and of course, the supermajority. But I think priority-wise, I think hopefully it's going to be a good session, I think, for local governments. I don't, hopefully, knock on wood, see a lot of the preemption bills that we've seen in the past few years that were always kind of circulating around, though nothing has been filed as of yet, but also I haven't heard the rumors just yet. But of course, we are far out. A thing to always remember, too, is the session doesn't start until March, so don't forget, it moves a little bit. So in the odd number of years, it starts in March and will run to May. Even number of years, it starts in January. So as we sit here now, and I say the next two sessions, and you would say, oh, that means the next two years? That doesn't work that way. In the next 14 months, there will be two sessions. So we go into the early one, or I'm sorry, the late one now, starting in March, so a lot can be filed between now and then, and then, of course, as soon as it's done in May, committee weeks will start back right up in September and October. So I really think of it more as one session, two halves. So think of it that way. So one session, two halves, the first half is going to get kicked off here. Committee weeks have already started, there have been two, one in December, one in January, and then there's two more in January, three in February, a little break, a little week off in the between, and then the session starts in March. As you also know, I know the March 7th and 8th is Palm Beach County Day, a few of you have already signed up for that, so we'll be talking as we get closer to that. I will, again, always remind you, don't forget, I have, I know you're coming, I'm getting the meeting requests in, we won't know what we got until about that Friday beforehand. They don't lock in their schedules until the committees are announced, the bills are adjourned, and things like that. So it's always a hurry up and wait type thing. Another key date to remember is February 13th, that is the deadline to have appropriation requests into the House. That's what Jeff and I and the rest of the staff are working towards that date. So if you have ideas or thoughts before that, get it to us before that, after February 13th, we won't be able to file it in the House. I looked literally an hour before this meeting, and as of right now, about 70 bills have been filed total, obviously not very many. So there's hundreds, if not thousands, more to be filed. So I wish I could tell you what's on the radar right now, but right now, there's just really nothing of note to be filed, to be addressed, which is not to say that it's getting slow, it's, all these legislators were just elected in November, they all turned in their ideas to bill drafting. I know the Bill Drafting Department is backlog, trust me, everything will come out between now and the deadline, which is the start of session, but as of today, you know, there's really nothing to point to just yet. In addition to the legislation they're working on, you know, I talk with your staff quite often, we do have a couple of things on my radar, I want to make sure that they're on, that you know they're on our radar. We're looking into engaging with FDOT regarding the Atlantic Avenue and Intercoastal Bridge, and possibly some pedestrian safety concerns and things we can address there. Still working on the details, it's exactly what can happen, but we're going to engage with FDOT there. And I'm also working with your staff regarding possibly some statutory changes regarding disposal of derelict vehicles. Right now, the rules put in place are kind of onerous when it comes to local governments, and requiring an individual city staff person to actually provide their own thumbprint and their own ID, and that doesn't quite fit for somebody who works for the city. So we're going to look at possibly a statutory change, maybe an amendment, not necessarily filing a bill, but going from there. The last thing Jeff said, as mentioned as well, huge win last year, and I'm very, very happy with it. You guys know we've represented you guys for many, many years, and I will go up there and fight like mad to make sure we do it again. At the same time, just remember, last year was, you know, I'm a baseball fan, we went for the cycle. You literally had a single, a double, a home run, and a grand slam in one game. We brought home almost over $3 million in allocations. I think we do the same agenda, I think you did a great job last year of kind of, what I say, covering the board, you had some, we had some park projects, we had some water projects, we had, you know, kind of a variety in different areas. You don't want to put all your stuff into one budget silo. With that said, it's not an election year, we're not getting a bunch of money down from the federal government just yet, so I would manage expectations and go, it may get back to a more realistic one, or, you know, going two for four out of projects, and hopefully staying off the veto list from there. And with that, I'll pause and answer any questions you may have, or turn things back over to Jeff.
Well, I just want to say, Matt, you have been representing us for, I want to say, as long as I've been here. We went through the process of hiring a lobbyist. We didn't have one prior to, I guess, my coming onboard, and to be honest with you, I don't even know what you guys did. But the truth of the matter is, is when you can bring home $3 million and at the salary that we're paying you on an annual basis, it's a huge win for the city of Delray Beach, and it has been so enlightening, because I know that first year that we hired you, and it was a battle. I mean, it was between you and, I want to say, it was a gray, another firm. Regardless, we ended up going with you. Your firm is a red firm, and, you know, and you have to look at who's in charge up there and how you can be, what you're going to be able to bring home to us. So it was the right move, and I remember we came home with a lot of money that year, we had some dry years in between, and then we had a big, like you said, year last year. So it has been just a wonderful relationship, partnership over these years, and I just want to thank you, because I know you've gone to battle for us over and over again, and you've made definitely a big difference in Delray Beach. So thank you for your work. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to say thank you also. You're the only face I know from my six years up here. Thank you for everything that you've done. I don't probably know half of what you've done, but I would like to ask, on the short-term rentals, what are your thoughts on how successful we'll be with getting some kind of, bringing it back to the local governments?
Sure. So that remains an unresolved issue in Tallahassee, and there's, it's a contested issue, there are arguments on both sides. I do think the issue regarding affordable housing is one issue that will be back this session, and is definitely getting a lot of attention from the leadership, and I think vacation rentals fit into that issue as well. I still don't think, you know, it's one of those things, it's equally fought on both sides, whether it's a property rights, and you bought this property, and it's your ability you bought this property, and it's, it's your ability to do with it as you please, as long as it fits into what is legally allowed in the city versus turning your house into a commercial business, you know? So there's arguments on both sides. I don't think it'll completely back in control of the cities, but I do think there could be some middle ground where at least there's more regulation and there's more oversight. For starters, getting just an address and a contact for, for where these properties exist would be probably step one up there. So I think, to answer your question, I don't think it goes completely back your way, but I think there will be legislation. I know there'll be legislation, and the debate will happen again. And at the end of the day, people probably won't get everything they want, but it'll be a step forward.
Anything is better than what we have. So thank you so much.
Mr. Boston?
I think you made a great point last year in regards to, it's, it's great to go up there and, and ask, but it's important to build those relationships and have the long game. And I think that has, has been fruitful for us over the last few years. I really appreciate your guidance for all of us, you know, each time that we do make that trip up there. You also made a point last year that it's important for us to advocate and join forces with some of the other cities. Do you see any subjects that are rising this year that we should be prepared to advocate for?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, still hopeful, you know, waiting for bills to get filed. You may recall, last year, there was a bill regarding mobility fees that I think was supportive of many cities that would clarify exactly how you're able to use mobility fees versus-
That was the impact fees.
Correct. I think that legislation will be filed again in a little, little more specific way. And that's one that I think would be, you know, I'll put it on your radar again. And that's something I think most cities can say, yeah, we agree with, with that. And especially, you know, I think you might have some counties saying, wait a minute, we like it the way it is. So I'll let you know as soon as that one's filed, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Anyone else?
I'll go. I'm going to go. You want to go?
I was just going to say, yeah, thank you. You did hit it out of the park last year. We're still celebrating that success, and we thank you. And obviously, you know, it goes without saying, our staff contributes tremendously to the process. Public Works, Missy, thank you. Sam, both of the chiefs participated in this. It's disappointing we have to take that larger request off, but when you're talking about the limited funding, I guess it makes more sense, and we might not likely get it anyway. And it looks like you hit all the areas here, safety, parks, historic drainage, and seawalls. So we're spreading a broad net, and I love that. And so thank you. And, you know, I don't know, you probably recall, I was a little hard on Mr. Caruso last time he was here over all the preemptive bills that are passing. It's very concerning for me. I think we're averaging about 25 per year. The year before last, it was 29, and they were really impactful. So thanks for keeping us posted on that, and I'll keep up with that as well. And feel free to email me if you see anything interesting coming down the pipeline.
Look forward to seeing you up in Tallahassee.
For sure. Just so you know, Jeff, just to tweak a little bit of what he said, it's not just much a preference in Tallahassee with the timeline. The state budget is only good for a year. It's a constitutional amendment, so the project has to get done within that fiscal year. There's usually a few weeks overlap. And so, so even if we were successful, you know, they're going to say, you got to get it done by July 1 of next year anyway. Which is not to say we can't put this on the next year, you know?
Looking forward. Happy New Year.
If I may.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were-
Sure. Matt, it's good to see you. No, it's okay. No, I let you go first. Just the job you and everyone at Ballard does for the city of Delray Beach and its residents is just second to none. The reception Mr. Boylson and I received last year when we went to Tallahassee to advocate the requests, it was just spectacular. When I see the list, are we ranking it based on the list that you have, or are you going to, is that a fluid list? How are we going to proceed?
Again, Jeff and I were going to continue to talk with your staff. Again, I think eventually, from my standpoint, you know, you prioritize from the city which areas are more important. But, you know, I look at it, again, like covering the board. Let's, let's narrow down one water project, or maybe two. Let's narrow down one or two park project. And that way, you know, because they do the budget by budget categories, by silos, and so you just don't want to have multiple ones all in one spot. And so if you go, look, these parks are very important, let's do all of them. Well, it's just not realistic.
Sure. And that's where I think your expertise and Ballard's expertise comes in. You know who is going to, this year, they're leaning towards this way, or, you know, you know the feel, the feeling a lot better than we do. To me, everything on those lists is spectacular. But as you guys speak more, and before we get up there in March, just to see what your thoughts are would be great.
Yeah. And just so you know, this list already kind of reflects that input. Looking for ideas with the staff, I already say, look, these are the categories. I wish there was somebody in Tallahassee standing on a corner saying, you know, I got money for parks. Who's got a park? Who's got a, you know? Hasn't happened yet, you know? But I know these are budget areas that continually get funding for local governments in them. So it's a much easier, I make the metaphor, or use the metaphor, that it's a, these are square holes, and we're going to put, take square pegs up there to hopefully fit them in there. You don't want to go up there with a shape that there's no hole in the budget for it.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. I'm going to ask a favor, just because I see all these beautiful ladies sitting here. I think they were, somebody was waiting for a public comment, and we've got three more presentations in front. Can we open up just for anybody who wants to speak to that and then bring the regular public comment afterwards, just in case they want to head out before it gets dark? Is that possible? Okay, very good. So at this point in time, just, I'd like to open up for public comment. Anybody that'd like to make a quick comment? And then we will open it up again after the presentation. So, but you only get to speak once. But this way, you can speak, and then you can head out before it gets really dark, because we're going to be here for another probably hour and a half before we get to that point. All right?
Thank you. Greetings, Mayor Petrolia and the City Commissioners. My name is Dwan Jackson Clayton, and I am the 21st President of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Xi Phi Omega Chapter. Today, I stand before you as a proud product of Delray Beach, from Kitty Campus, Spady Elementary, Carver Middle, and Atlantic High School. The real one on Seacrest, not the one here in Atlantic. On behalf of the chapter members, I would like to thank you for the letter of recognition honoring our 40 years of service to the city of Delray Beach. Xi Phi Omega Chapter was chartered on February 26, 1983, by 22 dynamic women who wanted to serve the South Palm Beach County area. This vision became a reality under the leadership of longtime Delray Beach resident, Mrs. H. Roof Pompey. And today, I'm proud to say that we still have five of those charter members here, and they are here with us, if you don't mind standing. Mrs. Ramona Wright, Barbara Norris, Sandra Weatherspoon, Ms. Sue Jackson, and Maureen Alexander.
Very nice.
Through the years, we have provided service to all mankind in Delray Beach, hosting events such as Pink Goes Red, which promotes heart health, our annual golf tournament that funds scholarships for high school students, our senior citizen luncheon, and drowning prevention programs that are held at Pompey Park, and our Thanksgiving basket and turkey giveaway. This past November, we provided over 100 baskets to families. As we continue to celebrate our 40 years of service, I would like to invite you to visit the Spady Museum, where we will have displayed our history from January 16th to February 17th, and on February 24th at Benvenuto's for our gala soaring into 40 years of sisterhood and service, a pink and green affair. We will begin the night with the reception, followed by dinner, dancing, and award presentation honoring seven distinguished members of our community. It is our honor to accept this letter, and I want to thank you on behalf of the Xi Phi Omega Chapter.
Thank you so much for coming in. And it's beautiful to see you all. Okay, anyone else? You can come up if you want to and speak. Yep. You've got three minutes, and we have to run that clock.
Is this about-
We're going to have another opening, but you can only speak one time. Public comment, come on up. Yes.
Good. My name is Bill Zeller, and I'm the HOA President of the Little Trailer Park off of Barwick Road, Highland Park. I've met a few of you. Nice to see you all again. The platform I ran on was to maybe try to clean up some of our homes. We've got about 130, we've got exactly 131 homes. And there's a few homes out on Barwick Road which have fallen into disrepair. And I had met the mayor a couple of days ago, and at your suggestion, here I am to talk about this, and the possibility that we could partner up and throw some ideas around, or connect with code enforcement. And that's less than two, three minutes.
Very good. Well, we will make sure that we get on that with code enforcement, to make sure that we can clean up the, the areas that you're talking about, and-
So can I, can I connect with?
I'll make arrangements beginning tomorrow morning with Director of Neighborhood and Community Services, Sammy Walthar. He'll be in touch with you. He's actually in the audience today. So please visit with him momentarily.
Sammy will come and talk to you outside of the chamber. Thank you so much for coming in.
And Mr. Zeller, make sure you sign the form, so we'll have-
Good.
Your name. Thank you very much, Mr. Zeller.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this one I would speak about, the tree? I was going to make comments-
You can make any comment you want.
Okay. My name is Gail Clark, 124 Northeast First, Northeast 7th Avenue. Forgot my address. I just want to make everyone mindful, I think a lot of us are, of the large tree that's always been over there by Old School Square. I know I've been here 20 years. I've seen people sitting on that large extending branch for years. I have friends who, their children and grandchildren, enjoyed pictures because a lot of people have sent them to me. And about a week or two before Christmas, that large 12 to maybe 15-foot branch was cut. It's gone. And I just was wondering why that happened? Was there a problem with the tree? It's always looked healthy. What was the reason? What was the discussion behind it? Where, I don't recall being, seeing at a city council meeting. I don't know if it was an in-house discussion. What, who authorized this, and how was it approved? Is this just something that anyone can decide? Perhaps a tree in my neighborhood, or at a church or somewhere, they can just go take the branch. And I wanted to know, because of the nature of the, of the cut, if you've been over there, the whole thing is about foot and a half, two feet is just, the whole side is gone. Surely, an arborist must have been summoned, wondering who that arborist was. And if an arborist was not summoned, why? Most importantly now, that the branch is gone, what's the condition of the tree? I've had a couple of friends who, one was an arborist, one just a person in landscaping. He just said, there's not, there was no, there's bark peeling, there was no slant to keep the water from going into the roots and to, and destroying it. I'd like to recommend, if the city has in mind an arborist to, to talk, because certainly someone's going to be coming and doing something about this. A gentleman, Wei Hoyt, he has been consulting with us about the pines at Dunes Park, and he's worked with the cities of Boca, Gulfstream, Lighthouse Point, also in Key West. If no one has thought about consulting with an arborist, I think it's very important. This tree, I know, is probably 50 or 60 years old, and it's, there's been a lot of comments about it. It's been a very sad day for us, and I'd like to make sure that something like this doesn't happen. I think it would have been nice if we could have had a discussion about it. Maybe there's something I don't know about. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Carla Cordero. I'm the Senior Program Manager at Path to College, a local nonprofit in, well, we work throughout Palm Beach County. We're based in West Palm. And I'm here actually with a volunteering opportunity to share. So Path to College is an academic fellowship that fearlessly clears the path for overlooked students to get into the best universities with the best scholarships. We're a program that works with low-income, high-achieving high school kids. Our kids come from Riviera Beach all the way down to Boynton, and we help them increase their competitiveness by exposing them to enrichment opportunities and supporting their academic achievements. For example, we offer free SAT and college prep workshops, where our students have been able to increase their SAT scores by an average 200 points. That's a lot. Our mentoring program is the bedrock of all we do. Our goal is to match our students with caring individuals to get the support they need to launch into college, and ultimately, life as successful young professionals. With the support of their mentors, our students are accepted to top-tier universities such as Harvard and Yale. Our PTC mentors are leaders in their own spaces. In this role, they will be serving as a positive role model and friend to a young student through a supportive, ongoing, one-on-one relationship. The mentor will build that relationship by planning and participating in activities together, striving for mutual respect, and helping set and achieve goals. They are the motivational cheerleader, offering social, emotional, and academic support to their mentee. So I'm here to ask, will you join us and volunteer to be a PTC mentor? We have weekly virtual info sessions where you can learn more about our program. You can visit pathtocollege.org/mentor, or come find me. I'm happy to talk more details. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, and esteemed Commissioners. I'd like to thank you for your time. I'm here because I like to start my own business in Delray Beach. I understand that this is an idea that was presented before.
Your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Kevin Murphy. In fact, I created brochures, so I could share them with you.
You can put it to the clerk. Yep, and she'll pass them. Thank you.
So what I'd like to do is along, yes. I live off of 151st Southeast 3rd Avenue here in Delray. And what I'd like to do is start a wave runner and electric surfboard rental business along the intercoastal. Now, I know someone tried to do this in the past, however, different time, different administration, and most importantly, a different location. Now, south of the bridge, I understand, is Deem Residential, and that it's also the historic district. That's a no-go. That's perfectly fine, because what I want to work with is north of the bridge. You have Lady Atlantic there, which is a great business. North of that, you have a public dock where anyone can dock there. However, you cannot stay overnight. Now, just north of that, you have an area of land that is owned by the city that is completely unused, unutilized. That is a space that I like to lease. I'd not only be able to generate revenue for the city, more tax money, but then on top of that, I'd be, you know, providing employment for others as well. This is something that would be a positive attraction for not only fellow residents, but also for tourists and all those that are visiting us here. I also spoke with the police at the marina to see their thoughts, views, and opinions. They had no issues with it whatsoever. They did say that if people are breaking the rules, that obviously they would ticket them. And I said, absolutely. I'm on board with that, because each and every person I would rent to would have a tutorial prior as far as safety, rules, regulations, what to do, and what you cannot do. So that being said, I would also, because it is a fun town with several bars and restaurants, I would also have a breathalyzer on site. So if there's any question, I would always make sure everyone is always of sound mind, body, and knowledgeable of the area, and following all the rules and regulations. So basically, I'm at the point now where I just need the city to say, hey, this is a great idea. We'll lease that spot to you. Kevin, go ahead, start your business, and we'll move forward with progress.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, public comment is currently closed. We'll open it back up after we continue with, after we finish with the presentation. So we're at, Mr. Moore, you have 5A. Your response to any public comments or inquiries from previous?
Yes, sir. I have actually three items listed, and I'll touch on a couple items as I go along. So before I do that, I'd like for the, seek the forgiveness of the City Commission, because when we had the dialogue relative to additions and deletions, the consent agenda item 6H2, which is a Henry Schein Medical Link agreement, that needs to actually come back to you all during the January 17th meeting, one week from today. The updated agenda references a note to that effect. So if I can have you all acknowledge that effect, that would be fantastic.
And if you need to do a motion of postponement-
Exactly.
That, right? Because that should have been caught.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Thank you. As far as the topics I've included, as far as updates today, so matters concerning the Town of Highland Beach Fire Rescue Service Agreement, this is a follow-up via an electronic mail message I communicated to each of you all December 19th, resulting in a couple individual discussions I've had with you all concerning the subject at hand. In essence, I've advised the City Commission that the Town of Highland Beach has been derelict and honoring its true-up obligation from the previous calendar year, that dollar amount being $121,514. And the contract is such that the service agreement between the city of Delray Beach and the Town of Highland Beach is such that the Town of Highland Beach, in this case, has the opportunity to review and question and seek additional analysis before a true-up calculation or bill is satisfied. And that opportunity was, in fact, granted. I summarized this pretty well, and part of your agenda transmission does include said electronic mail message communication. I was concerned about this, of course, because as the conclusion of December just ensued, the additional calculation of $396,140 for the calculation concluding December 31st, 2022, less than two weeks ago, is also due to the city of Delray Beach. And as I was concerned about, that payment has yet to be satisfied as well. As far as the $121,514 true-up payment having been due early 2022, that is the result, or we are now proceeding with a breach of contract declaration, and therefore, this is an opportunity for the Town of Highland Beach to, to remedy the situation. Fortunately, the Office of the Town Manager of Highland Beach did make contact with my office today, expressing an interest in convening so that we can resolve this issue. Likewise, that engagement will take place in the next two weeks, with the idea of me advising the City Commission publicly during the following City Commission meeting, which will be Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. Most important in my mind, ladies and gentlemen, is for you all to know and understand that the city of Delray Beach Fire Rescue, the Department of Finance, and all others involved did what it was required to do in terms of the analysis, the billing, et cetera. Town of Highland Beach just did not honor that obligation. As far as the most recent calculation bill due December 31st, 2022, they've taken a similar position in that they're asking for additional analysis and background information to support the rationale for that $396,140, of which we're always happy to provide that background information. We're always happy to work with anybody concerned in that regard. So direction to proceed is noted as underway. Additionally, ladies and gentlemen, municipalities throughout South Florida, including Delray Beach, works with an organization called Digitech, ADPN, which is the ambulance billing agency. So the ambulance billing agency in question, in this case, named Digitech, works with municipalities to compile emergency medical service transport fees and calculate those accordingly. And based on a recent clarification by that organization, there was an overpayment to the Town of Highland Beach of $114,046.26 having been made. And the final bill to the city of Delray Beach, or payment to the city of Delray Beach from Highland Beach, based on this recalculation by Digitech, comes out to be $103,025.80. So we've been in communication over the last couple of weeks with leadership of the Town of Highland Beach. Likewise, the one breach event, the $121,514 figure going back to the early part of 2022, is formally being executed in that regard. I look forward to getting that finalized and squared away, taken care of. And again, my anticipation is that an update regarding corrective action will be offered publicly during the February 7th, 2023 regular meeting. Also, I'd like to recognize in the audience, members of the Beach Property Owners Association. I do so because there was a communication offered over the weekend to me via their membership regarding some thoughts and observations relative to the Bay Area Island Service Plan, a mutually exclusive event. But as the city transitions from its relationship with the Town of Highland Beach, please know and rest assured that arrangements will be facilitated as part of the upcoming proposed budget process as to how that will all work in terms of responsiveness in that regard. Not a lot of details to be offered to that effect. However, I think it's important to disclose that direction to that effect will also be initiated so that we can get to the best place possible. Otherwise, I look forward to bringing information back before you all regarding the Town of Highland Beach true-up issue and EMS issue during the February 7th regular meeting.
May I?
Yes.
Ma'am.
Okay. Because there's three different issues here to talk about. But with respect to Digitech, are you saying that they are the reason why we overpaid?
In essence, yes. Because, again, they calculate-
Is, are, do you have a different opinion on this? I'm looking at two different people. You emailed us the email with requests regarding this information. I'm trying to understand exactly what transpired. I'm trying to understand exactly what transpired.
My understanding is that they must have switched programs, and the program generated a, the $130,000 extra.
Okay.
However, in prior years, the payment was around $15,000. So it was an extraordinarily large number. I know finance questioned it, but it was still much larger than we've ever paid in all the years.
Cut the check.
One sec, hang on one moment, if you don't mind. Finance questioned whether or not this, to this Digitech?
Initially, the number was $200,000.
Correct.
And finance questioned it.
Yes.
And then they brought it down to the whatever the current number is.
In other words, I'm trying to figure out if, I mean, if we can't collect this from Highland, because we don't have a great relationship with them right now. It seems like Digitech has an issue.
I've asked for the agreement from Digitech. I haven't received it yet, because I do feel that the city may have some recourse, you know, under a theory of perhaps negligence. But I don't, typically, the agreements, the liability is capped as to the value of the agreement. So if you only paid $10,000 a year for an agreement, then the liability to them is only $10,000. So I haven't seen it yet. I mean, I'm happy to update you. But, you know, and it works both ways. Because, you know what, Highland Beach knew what the history of those payments were, and they were consistently around the same amount of money. And frankly, I think they had a duty to call the city and question, why was it so astronomically high when you compare it to prior years? So, you know, I think the blame can be on three different sides.
Okay, so let me go back to, who cut the check? Did we cut the check to Highland Beach, or did Digitech cut the check?
No, I believe the city cuts the check.
The city cut the check?
Based on what was provided by Digitech, that's correct.
Okay, so, I mean, first of all, they owe us money to the tune of over $500,000. And now we're sending them money that doesn't even belong to them. I understand that maybe there was a question mark as to whether or not there was, that this was correct or not. But just the history of what Jellin brings to the table shows that there was no way it should have been this high. With somebody owing us money, I understand that you can't mix and match, but might have been good just to hang back a little bit, as they are doing. I know that, I know you can't do that, but.
No, but I'm just saying, this was, that was a year ago. The Digitech incident was a year ago.
Oh, it was a year ago? This wasn't just recent. So why are we just hearing about this now?
Because we are pursuing corrective action for the reasons we just said.
Pursuing corrective action or not, when we've spent, when we've sent money to an organization or our municipality, that is the taxpayer dollars here to another, and they're not returning it, I think the first place you go is to the commission to let us know what's going on. I mean, this has been a year now that this has been outstanding?
If I may, this is exactly why, whatever it was, back in March or April, I asked for the contracted administration position that we discussed.
Which we have.
Because then someone is available and has the oversight to know. We are, we were not getting the true-up money from them. We overpaid them. Obviously, it occurred a while ago, year, but getting to the bottom of why this happened is somewhat important to us, so we understand. In the correspondence, it appears as though this just occurred. I don't know what our recourse is. I would think there is some, but, you know. I don't know what to say. I mean, it's just, this is a disappointment.
Well, we're proceeding, and we'll be updating you all accordingly on all three fronts.
Okay.
So the two issues regarding the true-up, to be satisfied and squared away, and this is pretty straightforward as well. So I look forward to offering you all that update via the February 7th meeting and having matters resolved accordingly.
Okay.
We look forward to that, too.
Thank you.
All right, so your next item is 5A2?
Yes, ma'am, and I will require the assistance from the Department of Public Works in terms of facilitating that consideration. And that's in response to the West Atlantic Avenue piece pertaining to Sunday Village. So there are some specific requests coming down the pike, and we are likewise seeking you all's consideration and indulgence as to how we would make arrangements to go from there. So Ms. Barletto, Director of Public Works, is in position to facilitate that commentary.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Ms. Barletto, Director of Public Works. I actually have two items for you this evening. The first is just a heads up that there is going to be another sidewalk closure on East Atlantic Avenue at 325 East Atlantic Avenue in front of the former Hands Department Store. And to give you an overview of how the pedestrian traffic will be rerouted in that particular block. So as the construction begins on this building where they're taking down the arcade, and it is unsafe for people to cross in front of the building, we're asking people to walk around to the backside of the building and follow the paver walkway that goes behind that group of buildings along the front edge of the railroad parking lot, and then come back south to Atlantic Avenue to continue.
See, why would we not just have them cross the street to the other side and walk down?
That's an option for them if they would like to. In the past, we've found that people don't like to cross Atlantic and then cross back over again to get to something on the, on the same side.
I think people will probably just cross the road.
They do have a choice in this particular instance. This particular construction is going to begin next week. The sidewalk will be closed for approximately six weeks. And as well as the adjacent parking area will be closed during the day. And we've worked with the contractor to reopen that parking, parking area in the evening, as that is the area that's utilized by the valet queue for the Lionfish Restaurant. So in the evening, that will be reopened to them. Are there any, any other questions about this particular one?
No, just that, you know, when we're making these decisions, it certainly would be great to know whether or not this is going to inconvenience, you know, one of the heaviest times of our year. This is right in the middle of season that we're closing this down for six weeks. It seems, you know, it seems like, why would we even be allowing this to happen at this time and not just skew it off a couple of months where, when things settle down? I don't know, maybe they just don't even settle down anymore, but it just seems like it's an odd time to allow for, you know, right down in the heart of our downtown to be closed off, one whole side of a, of a walkway. It's my opinion. Yes, ma'am?
I think it's been my experience that when we have major development in our downtown, it doesn't matter, because they are on a schedule. And it's, if it's going to be, it's going to be. Unfortunately, these things tend to happen, no matter what the season, and we're at their mercy.
It's our sidewalk.
It's our sidewalk, but we don't want to incur them being anymore for six weeks.
Well, I have a question about that.
Pushing them, pushing them out.
How in the world is this going to take six weeks?
Yeah, it's a good question, too.
Well, there's a number of different things that have to happen. There, there will be a period of time where it's an active construction zone, where they're tearing things down, and then they'll be constructing a covered protective scaffolding for people to be able to walk under after it opens back up. So there's a number of different construction activities that take place.
Still seems like a long time to do those two things. I mean, take it down and put your scaffolding up. They should put me in charge of that.
Thank you, Mr. Colley.
No, but I can make that a permit condition. Changing the windows, there's a lot of work that's going on.
There is a lot of work that's going to go on there, but we can put you on the permit condition.
Maybe we should have the manager call you. Have a meeting.
See, I'm not trying to be smart with you, but the, I live near the Aloha Dry Cleaner. They knocked the whole place down in a day, not even a full day.
Demo doesn't take that long. It's actually, it's harder to put up than it is to take down. But if there are other things, or you're talking about windows and all these different things, I, I can understand that. But if you're going to be putting the scaffolding up so people can walk underneath, and then you're working on the building itself after you take down that, that overhang, it seems to me that that shouldn't take that long.
May I make a suggestion?
No.
Perhaps we should have the owner of the project come and give us a better explanation of it, or one-on-one meetings?
So, if I may? This, this is a heads-up issue for the, for the commission. There isn't like a, a point of entry for a vote on this for the commission. Just so you know, I'm letting you know that, that this is something that's going to be happening.
It's a done deal.
In the downtown area, yes.
It's a done deal.
Well, good to know. So when people, when people ask us, we're just going to say it was a done deal when it came in our direction. We didn't have anything to do with it. And let the chips fall where they may.
Okay, so moving on to something you do have a vote on. I think. There we go.
Andrews Avenue Complete Streets piece, yes?
No.
No, we're not to that yet. So this is a relatively long presentation for, for what you usually get from me on these kinds of, of issues. But what I'm going to take you through is the next 18 months of construction for Sunday Village Phase 1 that will be happening in Block 61, which is at the corner of South Swinton Avenue and Atlantic Avenue. Okay? The, we have been working with the contractor and the developer. I'd like to introduce them. They are in the audience tonight. We have with us Mike Cavelli from Cavelli Design Associates, Bob Morgan from Pep Capital, and then David Squinton and Scott Hendricks, both from Blue Water Builders. One of the, the first things that they did, they came in initially with a particular construction method that would be putting in, I'm going to show you, there's an underground parking garage that will require the input of, of sheet pile all the way around the outside, which we're all getting very familiar with. Those things usually require, as the sheet pile is being installed, the blockage of roadway for heavy cranes to be able to lift the sheet piles. This particular building contractor has chosen a different construction methodology that does not require the sheet piles to be pile-driven. Instead, they are, they're using a very big auger that's already been delivered to the site. If you drive by, you can see it there, where they'll loosen the soil and then put the sheet pile in using a different methodology that kind of squeezes it down into the ground without the boom, boom, boom of the pile driving. So there's, there's more safety, because the sheet pile is never disconnected from the machine. And it can all be done from interior to the property. So the amount of time that they're disrupting traffic in this very important intersection is significantly reduced.
Thank you for that.
Okay, so let me ask you, that's a good, that's great that they're going to be using their property, but so why would we have to block off any of our, if they're going to be using from their property out, why would it not just be a perimeter fence and then on their property they're doing this?
So that will be just for the installation of the sheet piles. As we move forward, there are a number of other kinds of work activity that will be done in the city's right-of-way in order to be able to prepare the property. There will be water lines installed and sidewalk, all kinds of, of different things other than that. And we're going to run through it as, as quickly as I can. I've got about 18 slides here. But I wanted to make sure that you could actually see each of the different ways that things are going to be, to be closed off. So one of the other things that they've done is wherever possible, they've scheduled their work to be at night to be less disruptive to traffic. And for those closures that will be on South Swinton Avenue, which we've already experienced some of that, those start to get problematic traffic-wise around 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So they're going to limit those street closures to, from 9:00 AM in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon to be as minimally disruptive as possible.
The 18-month duration, is that the entire time that we're looking at, street closures? Or was that just for that first phase?
Just for this first phase. Okay, so, so the very first one, starting in February for three nights, there will be a sidewalk closure and a lane rerouting along South Swinton Avenue from Atlantic down to Southwest First Street. And this will be, once they get the sheet piles in, in order to remove them, we are still going to need to have the crane brought in, which will be positioned in the, in the roadway to lift the, the sheet piles back out again. The second one, May, May of 2023 to June of 2024. This is a relatively long duration of 13 months. The entire right-of-way area along Southwest First Avenue from Southwest First Street to Atlantic Avenue will be closed off. The roadway is going to shift over to the side to take up available parking. There's no sidewalk on that side of the street already, so it's just city right-of-way and a little bit of parking that will be closed off to allow more available area to stage the construction project. We may need new batteries, Raphael. Okay, so also in May for, for just one day, on this one corner, we'll have a normal hour shutdown of the sidewalk of Atlantic Avenue and Southwest First Avenue while we make a connection to the city's stormwater system to provide for de-watering of the, of the site. I'm sorry, changing the slides takes longer than anything. Okay, in, beginning in June in the summer for four days, there will be a normal shutdown of the southbound lane of Swinton Avenue while the tower crane is delivered and assembled. And you can see there along Swinton where that'll be, thank you, Raphael. You can see there along Swinton Avenue, and that'll be the same traffic configuration that we've been experiencing, so it's not going to be unusual for people. Well, maybe it's user error. Okay. Starting in August and September of 20.
Now you're getting way ahead of yourself.
Yeah, well, I didn't want to skip over this one, because this one is actually closer, closure on Atlantic Avenue. So the sidewalk on Atlantic Avenue will be closed for five nights after hours for sheet pile removal on that side of the property. So there will be one lane of traffic that will be shut down and the sidewalk as that is done.
That would be the turn lane?
That would be the turn lane.
Will there be an alternate route, like maybe going down first to get to the, to the cross? Would they be able to do that?
Yeah, we'll detour around that. We'll, we'll have people go down First Avenue. Yes? Yes.
Good.
Okay, Raphael. Thank you. All right, starting in September of 2023 for five nights, there will also be an after-hour shutdown of southbound Swinton, again, for the sheet pile removal. This is much better. Okay, on, then, beginning in 2024, in February and March of 2024, for 27 nights, there will be after-hour shutdown of the eastbound lane and the turnback, turn lane, and one westbound lane and turn lane of Atlantic Avenue as the, the turn lane barrier is constructed.
I think most of us will be gone by then, so.
I hope you just mean off the commission. Beginning March and April of 2024 for 41 days, there will be normal hour shutdown of the sidewalk on the south side of Atlantic Avenue while they install new curb, gutter, sidewalk, and landscaping. This is very similar to the work that you saw done at Atlantic Crossings. Next? Okay. This, in March and April of 2024, this will begin the, the installation of the water mains and sewer mains in Southwest First Street. This road will be completely closed off during, during the time that they do the utility tie-ins. During, it says during normal hours, the two lanes of Southwest First Street, for a total of 42 days it will take to do all of the utility work in that area. Next? In April 2024, they will begin dismantling the tower crane assembly again for removal. There will be north down, north, normal hours shutdown of the southbound lane of Swinton Avenue for four days. It'll just be the same rerouting that we've used before. And then this is the, the final slide that shows the sidewalk and parallel parking closure that will be along Swinton Avenue for the duration of the project for 18 months, which will be used, the parking area there and the sidewalk will be used as a. months, which will be used, the parking area there and the sidewalk will be used as additional, um, construction zone. And there is available sidewalk on the other side of Swinton Avenue. If you go to the next slide, this is just an overview of all of these different things, um, giving you the, everything in one slide instead of the individual slides. And the last slide? So tonight, um, you have a couple of choices. You can either approve this, this MOT plan for the eighteen-month period and we won't bring it back. Each time we're ready to shut down one portion or another, you can choose to ask us to bring it back for each individual shutdown. It is, um, it is your choice which way you would like to go, but I would need a vote to approve or disapprove of this, this, um, maintenance of traffic plan.
Okay, so I have some questions.
Okay.
Let's start with, uh, the roads. We just, um, did, uh, Swinton in that area. It's all been paved and it's in good shape.
Yes.
What happens to, uh, you know, with, with, with this going on, all of the construction all the way around, or is there a plan to fix those roads, um, after they're done digging up and, or is that they're going to be their responsibility, or how does that work?
Yes, whatever damage they do, they, they will replace, they will be redoing all of the sidewalk all the way around as part of their construction plan. This particular block of Swinton has not been improved yet. That will be part of the Swinton and Atlantic intersection project when we get to that part. And by the time...
Will we be getting to that part before or after they're actually doing all this work?
I think we will be getting to it right after they're completed.
Okay. Makes sense, okay. All right, and, um, what happens if these numbers, these, these figures, these days are not correct and that they're extending out a lot longer? What is, what is our, uh, what happens?
If for some reason, their, their permit will be issued based on this plan that they have given us, if for some reason their schedule slips or there is an issue, they will come in and ask for an amendment to that, and I will bring it back to commission again.
Okay. Great, anyone else?
Love showing to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Ms. Gossel?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Thank you.
You got it.
Good luck.
And briefly, one other item, and that is the result, a brief report, very brief report, Andrews Avenue Complete Streets Improvement Survey, enabling the city of Delray Beach to pursue funding support from the Palm Beach County Transportation Planning Agency. So we have a brief update to that effect. Ms. Barletto, so if you would, please.
Again, Ms. E. Barletto, Director of Public Works. Um, some time ago, we, the commission received a citizen request to consider a complete, a complete streets project on Andrews Avenue, um, from George Bush Boulevard all the way to, um, Atlantic Avenue.
Who was the citizen request?
That was from former mayor Carrie Glickstein.
Did he come in here? Because he wasn't talking about a complete street to us when he was sitting up here talking. He was, he, he basically was specifically talking about a shorter area that I understood.
Okay.
So it was him that actually spurred this on?
Yes.
Just make sure that the, out there, no. You got it.
Risky tonight.
No, well, I mean, I feel like, I, I mean, I, I, I received a bunch of emails that were just absolutely, you know, like as if we had called this out. We absolutely did not. This body has not asked for this.
I'm with her.
And I question whether the mayor, the previous mayor, actually asked for this because when he was up here speaking, I heard something very different, but, okay.
And I'll say, if I may, if you don't mind, that, um, I've been out on the streets lately because I'm campaigning, and I did not encounter one individual who was happy about this. They received these things on their doors.
You were in the neighborhoods.
And they were upset.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So we can run through the, run through the, your individual experiences may not be reflected by the survey results that, that we received. And I did want to bring that up because I know that there's been quite a bit of conversation about it. So we did, um, put out door hangers to every residence along, along, um, Andrews Avenue, and we also invited people to participate via the city's website. We asked three simple questions. One, would you be in favor of a sidewalk within the city-owned right-of-way along the frontage of your property? Two, would you like an off-street bike path within the city-owned right-of-way? Or three, would you be in favor of an on-street bike path? Next slide, please. So the results were, we got a hundred and fourteen results to this, to the survey. Just under seventy-five percent of the results are in favor of building sidewalks. Slightly more than fifty-five percent of the results are in favor of an off-street bicycle path, and close to sixty percent were in favor of an on-street bicycle path. In addition to that, we received written comments, we invited written comments, and we received sixty-two different, didn't, different written comments. Twenty-five were positive toward the project, twenty were opposed to the project, seventeen were not really relevant to the project. There were a number of people who said that they wished we would do this in another place, and there were a number of people who said we just need to address the speeding that's there. So next slide. So examples of the comments that we got, on the positive side, this is a terrific idea. I live in the neighborhood. I believe this, it benefits everyone. This is a great idea. And on the other side, what a ridiculous idea. These are quiet residential streets, um, already packed on the weekend with beachgoers, and that Delray Beach needs to concentrate on what is the best interest of Delray residents, not the interests of cyclists of, from other towns who have no vested, vested interest in our town. So the next slide. So issues and direction that I'm looking for from the commission tonight. Um, we usually build these projects with our annual revenues that we derive from gas tax proceeds. It will not cover the cost of doing this project as well as implementation of our already established ADA transition plan. There are grant opportunities to help offset this cost with the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency transportation, um, alternatives. There was a time in which commission directed staff not to apply for more than one of these grant opportunities in a year. And I will say that last year, we had applied for the Barwick Road Phase Two from Lake Idar Road to the city limit, north to the city limit. The, um, due to FDOT issues with needing funding for the State Road Seven lawsuit that is coming up, that, um, that funding was dropped for this year, and they have automatically put our application for that project back into the hopper for the coming year. So our app, our, if we're going to stick with one application, we already have one in for this year. There are, when we look at the right-of-way, there are a lot of things that would need to be addressed. There are some, some very large trees that we would not want to harm in the, in the right-of-way. There is a lot of landscaping that is old and, and people have enjoyed that, um, landscaping in the city's right-of-way for many, many, many years. There are some places where people have actually built decorative walls out into the city's right-of-way, all of which are resolvable, but they would take time. So some of the challenges that staff sees to bringing this project forward would be that there are multiple project applications in a single year, which makes it hard for us to come up with the matching funds to, to implement those projects and the potential need for right-of-way acquisition. So...
Are you talking Barwick Road?
No, 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 we're back over on...
We're back over on Andrews. I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. Okay, so we are seeking commission consensus on the path forward tonight, whether you want to look at the full project, the full length of the roadway, a curtail the project limits to a very small piece of it, or whether you want to, um, continue the grant in the current year or hold it for another grant cycle.
So let me, let me just say this, because I, I've been over there, I don't know how many times, you know, knocking on doors and, um, there's a section that is more problematic than others.
Okay.
And it's Vista Del Mar to Atlantic Avenue. That's where the biggest inner, uh, confusion comes in with traffic, people parking on the road, strollers having to go out around in the middle of the road to get around these parked cars that really shouldn't be parked on the road. And then you have back, people backing into the road, uh, from, you know, kind of older style. It, it reminds me a little bit of George Bush Boulevard and all those kind of odd, you know, ways in and out that really make it difficult for, you know, bicyclists and, and especially pedestrians to interact with, with, uh, cars. That area is, to me, the most significant to focus on. When you start going north, it becomes more of a neighborhood. I know that people are driving too fast. It would be great to have some way of slowing them down, but for the most part, you're, you have walkers that are walking on the side of the road and not necessarily in the middle of the road to get around all of the, you know, traffic or the, the cars that are parked in and out of, you know, and all around. So to me, that's the area that I see as being focused, and I, I would have to tell you, that's what I remember, um, the previous mayor coming in and, and being most concerned about, and especially also the lighting, because people do walk to the downtown area versus taking a car that lived down in those, in that, uh, community. So that coupled with, if we're going to go for a TPA grant, those grants don't get granted next year. That grant that we've had for Barwick Road has been in the hopper for four years prior to?
They get granted in the, in the year that you apply for it, but we don't actually see any funding from that for five years.
That's what I'm saying.
Because it's on the DOT schedule.
So to be sitting here waiting for a grant from, and I understand it's great to have that as backup, but a grant for, um, you know, for five years, when we have a true issue that is happening on a certain section of that road, I think that, from my perspective, we look at that first and foremost, and possibly resolve that quicker than any money that we're going to get from grant, because I think that it's a, it's a, it's a safety issue. And that's what we had talked about. So anyway, that would be my recommendation, and I'm opening it up to the commission. Yes, ma'am?
And I would add to that, if we could put no parking signs on those roads, because people are parking right in individuals' yards, then you don't have that very narrow road where people are walking and biking. You know, I mean, there are probably easier things that we could do that could both accommodate the residents in the neighborhood and help to eliminate some of the problem.
Yeah, safety. Please, please, yes, sir?
I was just gonna say, this seems to me be an area where the residents want less traffic and less people. This is just inviting the opposite. So, I, you know, I think that no parking signs and everything that we received email-wise in the last couple of days, I, I think it'd be better. And, and I do see some of our friends from the BPOA, I didn't know if they had any input, but they generally have a better sense of that community, uh, than the five of us. So I think maybe, you know, Mr. Victorin and...
Well, we're going to open it up to public comments after this, so basically if you guys want to come up and speak your piece, we, we would love to hear it. Anything else? Anyone else?
I just wanted to say, this highlights or shines a light on the entire problem that we have on the area, because we do have a beautiful beach and we don't have enough parking, and we have had a parking in the residential neighborhood from at least my being up here, and we have done nothing to resolve it. We haven't talked about it. We haven't got a plan. I'm just, when we talked about moving the firehouse down on A-1A and perhaps building a garage, that is going to probably be a lot of good, um, PR to the BPOA and having a place for people to park. We want them to come and enjoy our beach, but we do nothing to accommodate them once we get here, except hand out permits, and there's an argument about how old you should be before you get a senior discount. So, uh, we really should think outside the box, do something to resolve the problem rather than continuing to talk about it, continuing to complain about it. This reminds me of the issues we had with, um, Forest Hills, Forest, um, Loson, when the neighbors did not want us to build sidewalks. They did not want us to put in, um, anything but speed bumps. And so that doesn't solve anything. People just, I've seen some people hit a speed bump at forty miles an hour and could care less. So let's just try to think outside the box, provide a garage, eliminate the parking in the neighborhoods. There'd be no need for no parking sign. I would rather mark, walk from that parking garage with the, where the fire station is than to have to go into someone's neighborhood and park on the grass when I know I'm not supposed to and hope my car won't be towed when I come back. Thank you.
Commissioner Boston?
Yeah, I, I understand, Commissioner Franco, what you, what you stated, and obviously I saw the same, a lot of the same emails, but we also have this, this survey. But for, for me, this isn't, this isn't, this isn't a priority. I have not gotten a lot of people prior to us bringing it up, asking me about this. It's way, way, way down on the list. So this is not, I think this is absolutely something that we keep in future plans, revisit at another date, because obviously there is some interest, uh, but this is just not a priority for me right now. So, uh, you know, I would look to my, to my colleagues, um, on how we, uh, how we move forward, if we even do move forward with any aspect, um, in the near future.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I think, I think your direction is, is, you know, I, I would, I would want to at least explore getting some of the no parking signs up in order to be able to eliminate the people who are having to go out into the street to walk, um, in the middle of the street. I think that's really a first step that we should do. And, um, and I'm sure that we're going to hear from the, um, the community as to where they stand on this. And, um, and they should also understand what a complete street is. It's, it is, it is a, a big project, and, um, you know, it, it does take a lot of space that people kind of have taken over as their own, really isn't their, their land. So, um, you know, these are the things that have to be taken into consideration because all of a sudden, people are saying, wait a second, you know, this is my land. I've been, I've, I've got my, you know, illegal fence up there, and that's coming down, you understand, right? Starts to get into that kind of war that we don't like to have to deal with up here, so, um, but I'm sure that we'll get some guidance from the, um, BPOA. And I think you have yours right now, and, and that is to...
We'll look at the safety issues in the area that you outlined.
Safety issues, and especially from, um, from that point where people are really walking to get into the downtown area, where there's all of that traffic or cars parked and backing into. It reminds me, like I said, of the old George Bush Boulevard that we're trying to figure out and, and make safer for pedestrian traffic.
We'll take a look at that.
And dog walkers and the whole bit.
And we can also work with the police department to do, um, a survey of that area, the same as we did north of Atlantic to Cash Arena with the no parking signs to make that all more enforceable by the police department. We'll work with the police department to put that program in place.
And we might want to consider, you know, something to slow the traffic down, because that's another issue. Those fast cars with, uh, pedestrian traffic and no sidewalks is a, is a...
We actually have done a speed study in there, and, um, it's very hard for a lay person walking their dog on the road to know how fast a car is going when it's coming at them, but there really is very little speed problem on Andrews Avenue. People feel that they're going faster because they don't feel safe because they're having to walk in the road.
You know, I'm going to bring it up again, because I don't trust those speed programs because you have this big, huge apparatus that's clocking someone's speed, and you know what they do first thing? Slow down.
True.
And so, you know, if you, if you were doing it by having it on a, on a, on a, you know, like a tel, I mean, a pole?
Right.
With a little tiny camera?
We have one that's like that.
I'll bet you get a much more accurate result.
Yeah, actually, that's actually the speed, the speed calculator that we have. It's stealth. You can't see it.
Can't do it, okay. All right, well, then you have the right results. I can't, I can't argue that. All right, very good.
Thank you.
Do you have that? You have your, all right, very good. Is that in the...
I yelled at this time, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we are going to open back up, um, anybody who did not speak before would like to speak. Um, we're going to open up public comments. Come up, state your name and address, and if anybody's from the BPOA that would like to piggyback on what we just spoke about, give us your comments, it'd be great. So come on up, state your name, address, and you'll have three minutes. Anyone? Anyone? No? Okay. Anyone? No comments, okay. Public comment is closed. Moving on to consent agenda, we had a couple of changes.
Motion approved as amended.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Franco? Ms. Gossel?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, moving on to, um, some of the changes that we made, um, seven AAA was six F1. That was pulled by Commissioner Johnson with respect to Martin Luther... That was pulled by Commissioner Johnson with respect to Martin Luther King Jr. proclamation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have, we have continuously put it on. It's a matter, of course, that it's Martin Luther King's birthday. We really don't do a lot in talking about it as a city. Maybe next year or whenever. We can do something with the day of service. The emphasis, we've got a Martin Luther King birthday. Okay, so what? We do the brunch with the Spade Museum. Okay, so what? We do not do what the day, as Dr. King would have had it or Mrs. King. It's a day of service. And I think we've lost our contact with it. I don't know the answer. I just thought I'd make a comment, that we're supposed to go out and do something. I don't know what it is. Clean up a neighborhood, visit the senior citizens, I don't know. But I would like to see, not the city necessarily, but a more emphasis of, a stronger emphasis on what is this service that we're doing? And, and let's do that in addition to honoring his life, but to put the emphasis back where it was supposed to be, the day of service. Thank you.
We don't need to have a motion to pass that. Okay, very good. So, moving on to, is that, that it? Yes, anybody else wanna make any comment about that? Okay, so, six B was also pulled by Commissioner Johnson, which is now seven AA, and this is the contract for the purchase of additional playground and recycling equipment. That was six B.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you. We just had a hour plus talking about the waste management. I didn't hear anyone talk about recycling equipment on the beach. I, maybe it was a part of it, and I didn't know about it. I think it's very interesting that it was not a part of the contract, unless I missed it. So, if I missed it, I apologize. If we're gonna put equipment, someone's gonna have to do the work.
If I may, we're supposed to be recycling on the beach anyway, I believe, based on our contract. Second, part of this exclusive blue flag beach program requires we recycle, and we should be anyway. People are coming off the beach, and they're dumping their recyclables in the garbage for lack of a bin. So, while we do have a few, we don't have them dispersed throughout. Is that a fair statement?
We do. And this, this covers trash receptacles as well. So, there's some new trash receptacles included in this discussion.
Who is emptying the recyclables? And are, are they really going into a recyclable program? Or are we just saying, these are the recyclables, choose, put it in the trash of the recyclable, and it all gets into the trash?
I think they're picking up at a central location by the pavilion, if I'm not mistaken, based on my recollection of other conversations. But we are looking to expand outside of the pavilion area so that we are collecting more plastics rather than discarding them.
And so, are, is it really going into the recyclable program, or is it going into the trash? That's my question.
Well, if we don't get recycle bins in the areas where we don't have them, it will be going into the trash.
She's saying if there's recyclable bins, are it still being-
You're asking? Well, I'm assuming it's recycling, it's in the contract right now on the beach.
Right now, if, if you go to the waste management facilities, plastic is not recycled.
Well, we just did that tour. They're doing some recycling.
Plastic is, plastic and glass.
And they're doing some burning.
So, it's, it's primarily paper and aluminum, and it has been for years.
I just hate the fact that we're spending this kind of money, and we don't even know where the materials are going. It's a great idea, don't get me wrong. I love recycling. That's one of my main issues at my home. And I love that we have these bins.
So-
Is it being properly-
The problem, I think, is when we discard it, we are no longer, we no longer have responsibility over it. We don't own it anymore. So, what happens to it after that point? I agree, it could be questionable, but we, we should be recycling.
I don't disagree with that.
Okay.
That's not my issue.
Well, I-
My issue is, we're spending this kind of money when we don't even know what the end results are. And I'm not trying to make a, a big discussion about it. I would just like to see someone say, yes, Commissioner Johnson, this is what we're doing. The trash, the recyclable trash is going into our recyclable program, because we are getting paid for it. Now, what they do with it after we have them collect it is not in our purview, and I understand that.
Right.
But I don't wanna see 303 whatever that amount is.
Well, that's, some of that is for additional stuff.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Two hundred and eighty thousand approximately is for a playground-
Right.
Of, of the 300.
And I, I'm sorry, I didn't get to go into each of them. Which playground?
It's a, at Leon Weeks. It's over in the Tropic Palms community. That's the next playground that needs to be removed and, and a new playground. So, the vast majority of that is playground equipment. The other is some receptacles for the beaches.
Can you tell me how much the recyclable bins are?
They're approximately $1,000 apiece. We're looking at about $25,000 approximately of that 300,000 number.
If I may, why wasn't the playground in our budget that we just approved?
This, this is a CIP project. This is just a contract, so we can purchase it front of us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a contract recommendation.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Sorry. Well, okay, do you want me to do a motion to approve, Ms. Johnson?
Well, I, I wanna say, just real quick, I, I just went to the Solid Waste Authority facility, and I have to tell you, they're recycling a lot of plastic, and they are binding it up, and they're, you know, and by the way, I've bought jeans that are made out of plastic bottles, so I know that somebody somewhere is recycling something. So, I, I have to tell you, if we don't do it, it doesn't get done for sure.
Exactly.
And so, we can only control what we can do, and we have to be the good stewards of our city, and you know what I'm saying?
I agree with that. My question really is, you assure me that the bins are being emptied, and they're going into the recycling program, correct?
Yes, just like when they come pick it up at your house, it's the same deal. And it's going into Solid Waste Authority, who's, you know-
And I've been told that sometimes if they get too much, it's trash. And that's outside of our purview.
Right, beyond our bill.
So, that was my concern. I've noticed that we have a lot of recycling bins, up and down they have, but we don't have that program now?
I think we do.
Because, we do? We do, okay. And in the park. So, whoever's collecting it knows that it's recyclable material. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Frank, Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Gassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mayor Petrollia?
No.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Gassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
No.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Let's do it. It's more for just making sure that somebody understands. All right, very good. Moving on to the regular agenda. All right, seven A is resolution number zero six dash twenty-three. We also have seven B, which is resolution number zero two dash twenty-three. And we have resolution zero three dash twenty-three, also on seven B. And then we have seven C, which is resolution zero nine dash twenty-three, and seven D, which is resolution zero, I'm sorry, twenty-two dash twenty-three, all of which are quasi-judicial hearings. So, what we're gonna do is read the rules into the books, and then anybody who's here that's gonna be speaking to any of those, please stand and be sworn in when we give you the prompt to do that. Quasi-judicial hearing introduction and rules. This hearing shall be conducted, these hearings should be conducted in accordance with the quasi-judicial rules. The applicant and the city shall be allowed to speak for 20 minutes each to present their case. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each, or a maximum of six minutes if the person requests, requests an organization or a group of people who are present but agree not to speak. The city commission, staff, and the applicant will be allowed to cross-examine a witness. The city or the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application or appeal may not be legally made upon personal views as to whether a project is a good project or not, nor may a decision be based on the number of citizens who support or oppose a particular project. The law requires that all decisions must be made on the basis of whether the project meets the requirements of law, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. At this point in time, what we're gonna do is ask for anybody who's here to speak to any of those resolutions, which was regular commission, regular items seven A, B, C, and D, please stand and be sworn in.
Will you raise your right hand, please? By the authority vested in me as a notary of the state of Florida, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, so, the first, seven A, which is two resolutions. One is the glazing height on the east and north facades of the existing building at northwest Fifth Ave, 98 Northwest Fifth Ave, and what else is it? It's the percentage of storefront opening for the facade. Those two items, I'm gonna turn to the commission and ask if there's any ex parte communication that needs to be addressed.
I think it was part of a tour I received from Ms. Jadizing and Ms. Tibbs several months ago, and I also have an email on the city server.
Okay.
Hi, just what's on the server?
Okay.
What's on the server? And I had a tour, but we didn't discuss this.
Server. Um, server as well. So, at this point in time, we're gonna ask that the city enter the project into, file into the record.
Yes, Anthea Giniotis, Development Services Director, and I'd like to enter file 2022-080 into the record. Both resolutions are waiver requests, and they're interrelated to the storefronts on the existing building.
She's gonna, she's just kind of entering the file, so we're gonna have a presentation.
Okay. I wanted to make sure she-
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Moshe Alanyaro. I'm here representing the architecture firm SRS, and it's been a pleasure to work in Delray Beach. The past couple of years, we had a few projects going on, and every time we come, it's a wonderful vibe, and we really appreciate it. This is a project that you guys, I'm sure, have seen, as you've driven up and down Northwest Fifth. The project is nearing completion. We just brought it here today for a very technical item, something that came up during construction, and we ultimately have to come back to the board to, to deal with the waiver. So, the project was originally approved with a waiver for 75% glazing width from what the code, from what the zoning code requires, and seven foot, sorry, seven foot two glazing height, as opposed to eight feet. And those waivers were given because of us using an existing building, which we retrofitted and ultimately had to fit to those dimensions. During construction, we found that some of the, to meet those requirements were impossible, and therefore, we had to reduce the, the height and the width of the glazing by a small percentage. We tried to deal with it administratively, but ultimately, since it was a waiver, we have to come back to the commission and get it re-approved. And I think you can see the difference here. That's the original approved elevation, and that is with a reduced height. It's very minimal, but again, it's a technical item that we had to bring. And we appreciate working here in Delray Beach, and it's been a pleasure, and we hope we'll come back for further projects.
Very good. Thank you. So, staff will do their presentation?
All right, I have to make a correction for the record. I'm sorry, I flipped to P R two. So, the file for this application is 2023-003, so sorry. So, the record's corrected, that's a correct file for this. The changes before you are minimal. I can show you, you know, other versions of the elevations with colors to show the difference, but it's really just the issue of dealing with an existing building and, and having a structural system that puts a header in a different spot. So, what we're talking about was a previous waiver that approved the storefront heights to, from the required eight down to seven feet two inches, and based on the structure of the existing building, it really does need to go to six feet 10. Staff does not have any administrative authority to make adjustments from waivers. This is something that I think, based on, you know, it's a four-inch difference. And so, if there, perhaps, as we look forward to streamlining processes, if we could do something with a 10% allowance for administrative processing, not to take, really a CRA project or anybody's project through what required two staff meetings, a historic preservation board meeting, and now we're here, this is my biggest pitch about this project. So, because honestly, to see the building is under construction, it's, it's turning out beautifully, the amount of relief, that's the amount of relief that was initially requested. This is what you have before you today in the first resolution. The changes are really not noticeable.
Right.
And then the others. And then this one changes the reduction on the north side from 75% down to 69%, which is a 6% change.
I think that it's a great point that you bring up, and especially if it's an existing building, and there's something that comes up, and it makes, you know, a little, there's a slight change, seems like a lot to have to go through to get to this point. And it seems like it is not, should, almost not necessary. Anyway, but you have to do it, because it's rare.
Right. I mean, variances are tied to the minimum amount possible, and that's what the Board of Adjustment hears, but the, the waiver findings that are in front of you, I mean, ultimately, maybe we could work in some sort of minimal relief for when construction goes differently.
Absolutely.
This had go through H P B, and they recommended approval of the change as well.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you very much. And so, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. If there's anybody here that would like to speak to this, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Is there any cross-examination or rebuttal testimony by either the staff or the applicant?
Motion to approve.
Seeing none.
Resolution number oh six two three.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Gassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Gassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Doing a great job. Thank you. All right, moving on to seven B, resolution number zero two dash twenty-three.
maybe we could work in some sort of minimal relief for when construction goes differently.
Absolutely.
This had go through H P B, and they recommended approval of the change as well.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you very much, and so this is a quasi-judicial hearing. If there's anybody here that would like to speak to this, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Is there any cross-examination or rebuttal testimony by either the staff or the applicant?
Motion to approve.
Seeing none.
Resolution number 0623.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bolston.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Ms. Cassell.
Yes, resolution to approve.
No, motion to approve.
Motion to approve resolution number 0723.
Sorry, I'm flying through this.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Ms. Cassell.
Yes.
Mr. Bolston.
Yes.
Doing a great job, thank you. All right, moving on to 7B, resolution number 02-23. I hope the rest of it goes like this.
Yes, wouldn't it be nice?
I'm going to help. 7B and 7C are the same project, so I'm hoping the applicant can just combine presentations into one.
That'd be wonderful. All right, super. So let's start with, we've sworn in. If there's anybody that didn't get sworn in that came in afterwards that wants to speak to this, you're going to need to let us know, and if you're going to come up and speak, let us know you've been sworn in. Disclosure of ex parte communication, and this is. P R.2. P R.2, so any ex parte?
Only what may be on the screen.
The same.
Okay, any?
Same.
Same here as well, so let's go to entering the project file into the record, please.
I'm Thea Giannottis, Development Services Director, and this is file 2022-080 for the record. Again, there's three separate actions before you, two waiver requests, and an in lieu consideration.
Very good. Hi there.
Hi, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here before you. I think this is my first meeting without all the plexiglass, so it's nice to actually be able to see some faces.
It's a little unusual when you first come in. We've had a little time, card time to get used to it.
I can see everyone more clearly. Well, thank you for having me. Again, Christina Belenki for the record. I think everybody is probably very familiar with this property. So we initially came through about two years ago for the larger parcel that's outlined in the yellow box, just south of Atlantic Avenue, west of Southeast Third Avenue. We went through, we secured waiver requests, I believe there were three waivers at that time, a site plan approval, but the smaller box outlined in yellow was under a ground lease at that point in time, and there was a title issue for a sliver in between. So my client was unable to secure clean title for that sliver piece and get under contract for the remaining portion of the property. They've since been able to do so, so now we have filed a site plan modification to be able to use the entirety of the site, so we're not leaving kind of a .1 acre piece vacant and unusable, and so we're seeking some of the same modifications, the same waivers that were previously requested. So again, the existing conditions versus, this is the previously approved building, just for reference. This is the previously approved site plan, and I've highlighted the expansion area so that you can see what was previously approved in the area that we're proposing to build into now, and here you have the proposed site plan modification. Just in terms of some of the changes, we are increasing the restaurant and retail space and the office space as well. With that, we are proposing to increase the parking garage from 71 spaces now to 80 spaces, and previously, there was no civic space required due to the size of the parcel, but now we've tripped the threshold. We're 250 square feet of civic space is required, and we're exceeding that. I do have the previously approved waivers noted there. There were three waivers previously approved. The first two noted for the three-story arcade and for the setback are the same ones that we're requesting this evening for the southern portion of the property. The third waiver is applicable to the front setback, so does not need to be requested So just going through the two waiver requests, the first is for the side yard setback on the west side of the property adjacent to the railway tracks. Essentially, the code requires that when you have a garage with openings, to ensure that there's proper ventilation, a five-foot setback is required from the property line in lieu of zero feet that would otherwise be permitted. And so we are providing a setback of two feet and just over two inches, which is a reduction of two feet and nine inches roughly. So again, the intent here is to ensure there's adequate separation between buildings to allow for ventilation when you're having a parking garage. In this instance, we're adjacent to the FEC railway tracks, and so those are the two dimensions that you have there on the screen on the left-hand side. Essentially, from the actual railway track itself, there's over 35 feet to the property line, and then 38 feet to the building area. So there's no building that's going to be placed abutting this area of the parking garage, and so there will be adequate ventilation. Also, just because of the narrowness of the site, we really are unable to reduce the width of the parking garage any further. Any further reduction would compromise the circulation and the maneuverability and the operations of the parking garage, and that's essentially why it was requested in the first place. Also, you can see kind of on the south end of the parking garage there, it does curve in, so we are meeting that setback on the south property line for a large portion of the affected area for this request, so it's only really a small portion that we're extending further south at this point. And then the second waiver request is for the arcade height, and again, this is applicable for the portion that is within the parking garage, again, to extend the parking garage to ensure that there's adequate maneuverability. So essentially, the project provides an arcade along both primary frontages to enhance the pedestrian experience, to make sure there's shade, which is sometimes lacking, to make sure there's protection from the rain. It really is more consistent with the desired streetscape that the city is seeking to see downtown. So we are proposing to expand that arcade, and the code allows for us to expand in height up to the second story, but not above that. So where the parking garage is, that arcade does extend beyond the second story, and again, that's in order to accommodate the parking garage and the required dimensions for adequate circulation, ramping, you know, parking space dimensions, things along those lines, pedestrian pathways. And so the request will maintain better connectivity and compatibility with the surrounding buildings on Atlantic Avenue and bring the building closer to the public right of way as envisioned by the complete streets design. And so here you have your waiver criteria. There are additional criteria for the CBD that are noted on the screen, too. The waivers shall not affect the neighboring area. Again, the setback waiver is adjacent to the FEC railway tracks. It's not going to affect, you know, any potential future development there. The arcade waiver is for the above stories of the parking garage, and it will allow for an attractive public pedestrian experience. It will not significantly diminish the provision of any public facilities. It will not create an unsafe situation. Rather, it will ensure adequate maneuverability within the parking structure. It does not grant a special privilege. It was already a waiver that, or these were both waivers that were approved for the parcel to the north. And then your CBD waiver criteria, it shall not result in an inferior pedestrian experience. Again, we're trying to enhance the pedestrian experience by providing this covered arcade. It shall not allow for the creation of significant incompatibilities with neighboring buildings or lands. We don't believe there's any incompatibilities there, and it actually continues kind of the streetscape design on the other side of Southeast Third Avenue, and shall not reduce the quality of civic open spaces. We're actually providing a civic open space now with the site plan modification. The second item on your agenda related to this project is a payment in lieu of providing parking, and so specifically, we are seeking to provide payment in lieu of 13 parking spaces at the fees that are established within the city's code for the downtown area, so it would total $307,580 in terms of a payment contribution. Now, this really is kind of driven by anticipating full restaurant use on the ground floor. They, through our site plan modification, we have different scenarios for that ground floor use. So considering the absolute most intense use of all restaurant on the ground floor, that is where we have the 13 parking space deficiency. And so here on your screen, you have our shared parking calculations, and so the restaurant square footage is about 7,183 square feet total. Those are the parking calculations per the city's code for their shared parking regulations. And again, 93 parking spaces would be required under this scenario. We're proposing 80 within the garage. Now, under a second scenario, if the restaurant space is limited to 6,000 square feet, and the balance of it, 1,189 square feet, is retail, general, commercial uses, we actually have a surplus of parking. We'd have a surplus of three parking spaces in this situation. And then taking that one step further, if that were all to be considered retail or commercial uses, we would actually have a surplus of 39 parking spaces. So when we were discussing our site plan modification early on with city staff, they noted that a lot of the times, owners come in, you know, after the fact and realize, you know, they have a tenant that wants to use up more space than originally anticipated, and so these requests have to come in after the fact, and it was kind of advised that if we were considering that as a possibility, it would be best to come forward, you know, now to see if we can secure that parking payment in lieu request at the most intense use, and then, you know, should things change and we have more retail space, then that's even better, then we're on a surplus. And so as part of our parking analysis, we did provide a study and analysis to the city, essentially reviewing the data that the city had provided over a three-month period for the old-school square parking garage. Essentially, we needed to show that there was adequate public parking in the downtown area. And so the maximum daily occupancy of that garage was 49% of the spaces occupied, leaving 267 parking spaces available. So on average, when, you know, the office use is there, if there is a sharp shortfall, there's adequate parking, even during the peak occupancy at any given time that, again, this was based on the data that the city provided to us, it showed that 90% of the garage was occupied during peak times, so 52 parking spaces were available within the city's garage. So as such, there was sufficient capacity to accommodate the 13 spaces if the restaurant intensity is maximized. And so in terms of the in lieu parking criteria, the first is that there are adequate public parking facilities available, and again, we provided that study and analysis to demonstrate that. Compliance with the land development regulations. Again, this is a development that is within the scale of what is envisioned by the CBD. It's providing a mixed-use office and restaurant development to the downtown. Compliance with the Central Business District regulating plans. It's located within the central core along a primary street, has the required retail frontages, it proposes superior pedestrian environments, and is going to continue to activate the primary streets. And then compliance with the city's comprehensive plan, and with that criteria, I'd point to N D C.2.2.7, which basically encourages parking to be in off-street parking areas in a manner that does not detract from the character of the street by locating it in the side of the rear of buildings, and it says, "Large fields of parking between building facades and streets are generally not desirable," so in contrast to what exists today. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good.
All right, so we'll go through really quickly. I do want to make a point of clarification on resolution 223 for the record as well. So you know this project, and I think you've had a good overview as to why the applicant is back before you. It's, they've acquired the parcel to the south. This is a sister project to the renovations that happened to the building to the east, and these are the surrounding buildings. So there's two waivers, and there's the in lieu. So resolution 0223 is the setback along the train track. The resolution before you is for two feet three inches, which would allow, they're still short an inch and three eighths, based on the presentation I just watched, so we're going to need to make an adjustment if you decide to move forward, allowing a two-foot-two-inch side setback. So let's just go really quickly. Again, there's a class four because of expanding the project to include that new property. As part of that, the project has grown to try to maximize the parking. This is the parcel, the portion of the building that would require the side setback relief, and as you can see, it actually curves away, so we just want to be sure that resolution captures the closest point to the side setback. You know, this is next to the FEC. Typically, if you have openings on a facade, we require a five-foot setback so that there's light and air and other things within your own properties, and we're eliminating any conflicts with future development blocking windows and doors. So because there's openings, it's supposed to be a five-foot minimum setback. However, in this instance, there's no adjacent building that will happen, and if there aren't openings on that building, we're going to have a very large facade facing a pretty prominent view to the city, and so we do want to encourage that, those articulations if possible. The exact same waiver was granted for the previous, for the balance of the building that was previously approved. So that's the first side setback waiver. All right, the second waiver is related to the arcade, and I think what you'll remember is this is sort of the way the arcade is envisioned in the code, right? That you're going to come over the setback, you're going to capture passersby, and you're going to have this, you know, an upper story of habitable space. Because of the depth or the width of the project, there was a previous approval to allow not just the one story, but a second story, and within that is parking, to try to get that parking garage to maximize as much potential spaces as possible. And whereas people, humans, walk out onto this open-air balcony, what's happening now is behind this parapet is more, is surface parking. So it is, to be clear, visually, a bit more intense, but is the exact same situation that the commission approved on the building that, when it was a smaller site. Now, because the site does trip an open space requirement, there's, there's a break in the building, I'll go back to the, so you'll see that this new, this break in the building with having that piece open to the sky has been tripped, and the architect has incorporated that and other techniques, and then the arcade does extend further along here, providing that, that covered pedestrian area and environment. So that's, these are these two, and you know the right waiver criteria, it's the two different criterias, because the Central Business District does have the extra ones related specifically to making sure we don't create an inferior pedestrian environment, and that it's not significantly incompatible, and that the connectivity is maintained, and that we're not reducing the quality of an open space in addition to the regular ones. All right, so that is this one. I had mine separate, so I'm going to, sorry, Raphael, I started driving. So, all right, so the in lieu, I think you've gotten a pretty good overview. We are trying, you know, the code has different allowances for buying parking out, right? You, sorry, I didn't realize I have this much here still. Okay, so the previous building, which is up here, did not rely on any in lieu, and there were 67 spaces required in that project, and 71, so they exceeded what was required on-site. Now, the building grew, and the building didn't, grew kind of about the middle, so we've got more parking, more arcade, that's before you in the other request. So the current proposal now, instead of just providing 71 parking spaces, is providing 90, is providing 80 spaces. Depending on the programming of the ground floor is actually the issue in terms of how much in lieu or if no in lieu is required. If it is all programmed as restaurant, then 13 spaces are required, and that's what's requested. So in the previous building, you had a little bit over 5,000 square feet. With the new site and stretching the building, you've now gotten a little bit over 7,000 square feet. The office has also grown. It was 11,000 square feet, it's 14,500 and change. So ultimately, as the applicant presented, if about 1,000 square feet of the ground floor remained retail, there would be no in lieu required. Restaurant has, particularly restaurant on Atlantic Avenue, has the highest parking requirement because it has the biggest impact, and so ultimately, that's the decision, is whether or not the building will physically look the same, the space will look the same, the storefronts will look the same. It's really about giving them direction in terms of how they can program the use, and in order to have that flexibility, the in lieu payment would be $307,580 for this area of town. So that's the decision before you. Your findings that you have to make in order to grant an in lieu request or that adequate public parking options are available, and the request is consistent with the Land Development Regulations and Comp Plan, et cetera. So the property is located, it is providing parking itself, and that mix of uses between office and restaurant is already considered in the calculation. This is all generated off of that shared use, and so in its location, there's the public lot to the, to the north on the east side of the railroad. I pick's garage is a little further with public options. There's multiple on-street corridors with parking, and it is within walking distance to the, to the, you know, the public parking garage at Old School Square. So ultimately, the decision is that this location is appropriate for accepting in lieu for 13 spaces. I'm here if you have any questions.
Very good. Again, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, so if anybody here would like to speak to either 7B or 7C, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Any rebuttal or cross, well, it wouldn't be any cross, but any rebuttal testimony? No? I guess it wouldn't be any rebuttal either. Thank you very much, Ms. Belenki and Ms. Giannottis. To the commission.
I have a question. I guess, Anthea, I prefer you, if you don't mind, no offense. I guess, Anthea, I prefer you, if you don't mind, no offense. I, the setback, we already approved that. I don't have a problem with that, it's on the railroad track, it doesn't matter at all. The arcade, if you go back to that picture, when we're approving this, we are approving the third-floor arcade only for that section that is garage parking, they can't carry that along the entire side.
No, it's exactly what is presented to you, because you're evaluating the impacts in the design of the specific design solution on that specific site.
Okay, I just want to make sure that-
And that's part of why we're back again, because we were not going to administratively approve extending the same condition without coming back to this board.
Right.
It is, the SBRAB, CBD waivers, I should have said this, actually, CBD waivers do require review by the SBRAB as well, and the SBRAB did make a recommendation of approval for the arcade.
He did?
I think it was six-two-zero for, for the arcade, and five-two-one in support of the setback waiver.
Great, thank you. And the only other thing is, I struggle with the in-lu of parking, you know, if you can't park it, you shouldn't build it, is somewhat my motto, because the explanation for a lot of the traffic problems we have, we just approved, no offense, I didn't vote for it, but that, the building which needed twenty-some-odd in-lu of spaces. So when people come and they say you have the parking because you have this garage, well, that's already kind of assigned to two other projects in the area, if you listen to their presentations. That concerns me a little. However, what I will say is, I think generally with restaurants, you could have four people in a car, you could also have people Ubering, there's scenarios where you are giving the maximum you would need, but you really don't need it. So I'm feeling a little comfortable with the in-lu of, especially in light of what you are presenting, because that is a substantial amount of parking. Thank you.
I have a question, or two. Thank you very much for your presentations. I had wondered what had happened to the project, two years it sounds like, forever. My question is, management of the garage. Now, these, this garage, these parking spaces on top of the building are supposed to be dedicated to this particular building. Is that not correct? Is that correct?
I mean, the intent is certainly that the employees of the office space and those visiting the restaurant would be utilizing those parking spaces.
So do you have a system to make it that? I know you can say, reserved for XYZ company, they, each, I guess, office gets a certain number of spaces, but, and if someone's parking there illegally, then you have the right to tow that person. But for the restaurants, are you going to say, I don't know, how do you control it?
Right, so it is, it is very difficult to stop members of the public that may or may not be utilizing the restaurant from parking there. So my client is working with a specialty parking operations company to ensure that they do provide adequate parking for their tenants. We are proposing a gated system, so, for example, employees might have a pass that allows them to park for free, or, and maybe those visiting the restaurant might get parking validated, whereas those that are just coming in from the general public looking for a space to park would be charged a higher amount for parking. So that would discourage them from parking there if they aren't visiting the office uses or the restaurant uses. So we are still fleshing out the details, but a system similar to that that would discourage members of the, the general public from-
Discourage but not prevent.
Correct.
Discourage but not prevent. The reason I'm asking that is, I think it was at our last meeting, we had what we suspected was a valet parking violation, and the persons using the valet parking were ultimately being given the tickets for this illegal parking. So I know it's not an easy thing. I guess the only way you could prevent that is with a, an onsite parking person.
Right.
Regulated gates, just, you know, I don't, if, and I don't, I'm not an expert in it, and I'm not even trying to, to cause problems with this, just to ask, what are your plans? Because this is getting to be a problem. And I just thought I'd listen to what you had already thought about.
Yeah, and I certainly appreciate that, and even with an onsite parking attendant, it's hard for them to, you know, follow people to determine if they're going to the restaurant or the office use. But my, my client is certainly looking into all of the options and working with, again, a specialty company to ensure that the parking spaces that-
Especially for the office spaces.
Are going to be needing to utilize are going to be available to them, and, you know, signage will probably be a large part of that as well, but again, you can only do so much when people disregard signs, and then you have to worry about towing them.
Well, I need to put something on the record then, because if you're using a shared parking calculation, you're not reserving the spaces that are in the shared pool.
Say that again, Anthea, I'm sorry.
If you, you have used a shared parking calculation, to say, restaurant and office, which have different peak loads, are sharing the spaces, you're not reserving the office spaces. You can control free access versus paid access versus whatever, but you're not going to be able to sign the restaurant, the, the office as reserved.
And, and that might have been a mis-speaking-
It's a detail, but in terms of management, yeah.
In ensuring that the parking is for customers of that building.
I would hate to see, say, three beautiful restaurants in the building, and I want to go to that restaurant, I can't find a parking space, I'm not going to be able to go to that restaurant. It's just a situation that, it looks great on paper, it looks great in the plans, but, and you were even saying, there might be excess parking, not in downtown Delray Beach, not if we keep doing what we're doing, because we have valet parkers, attendants, parking in places they're not supposed to park now. And you open up a beautiful parking garage just down the block, they don't even have to walk as far to park that car illegally. So I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know the answer, I don't know if you know the answer, and Thea certainly just threw another bomb at you.
No, I certainly appreciate it.
You aren't going to control them, so.
One other thing I think is important to note, because of the, I believe, the square footage assigned for the, the active uses, the office and the restaurant, and the number of employees associated with that, we are required to put a transportation demand management program in place. We have an initial draft at the city that we've received some comments to, so we're still fleshing out the details, but it's to encourage people to use bicycles, to use public transportation, put incentives in place to encourage, you know, shared rides to the office, things along those lines, so.
Uber and freebee.
Exactly.
Very good. A question for, thank you, question, Anthea, when was the last time we looked at the amount of money that we're putting into our per-space for in-lu parking?
I don't know.
It's whenever the ordinance was adopted.
It was the resolution that adopted the fees, it was, I've been here six years, so it's within-
How many?
Two thousand and twelve, but I thought it had been adjusted since I've been here. No, because it's been, the resolution with the, with the, I thought that the fees have been adjusted.
They have been. It couldn't be two thousand and twelve, because I was elected in two thousand and thirteen, and it's been since.
So this is-
I don't have the date, I'm sorry, I don't know.
That's all right, but this is the most current that-
Yes.
And we all know that construction and concrete has gone up, so I don't know how often we're supposed to look at this. We don't like the in-lu parking, and not only that, we're not even up to date as to how much an in-lu parking space is going to cost. Just for the record, I think we should do something a little bit more current, and none of us even know when this amount was chosen. So I, I think, once again, we're selling the city short, perhaps, I don't know, but we're not keeping current on what it's costing. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I've brought it up before. I, I welcome a workshop where we look at the in-lu parking-
Hundred percent behind.
And whether it should even be an option. But today, it's an option, and today, this is, this is the rate, I'm in favor of everything we've discussed this evening.
I agree with you, Commissioner.
Okay, I have a question for, just, I know, I think it would be, Anthea's fine. When we first were looking at this, I thought there was like a green wall or something up on the west side of the building. Do you remember that? I mean, it was something unusual.
So usually, the green wall is, is a choice for people who don't trip, actually providing a physical space, civic open space with, you know, a bench, trashcan, lighting, landscaping, and I suspect that there was a shift, and I'm looking at Julian, but honestly, he wasn't the original planner, so when the actual break in the building that you see before you hear became required, because the bigger they get, the more-
So whatever was on the backside kind of changed, because we have now a civic space on the front.
I think so, but, I mean, ultimately, the, if the waiver, if the waivers are approved, the site will return to SBRAB for final evaluation and will appear as an appealable, and so we can certainly look into that and point out any change that's happened to the SBRAB board as they consider the, the building itself.
The reason I, I bring that up is because one of the things that was, this is a very massive building on a very small, narrow lot, and it is, there's nothing blocking it. You can't put trees and, you know, things to buffer it on that side, because we are now going to be two feet from the, the line where the railroad area is, and I, I just, I, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about how that's going to look when you're coming down what was a really nice, kind of almost open space to now, what it's going to look like.
Wasn't there something also on the southeast Fourth Avenue? Is that Fourth? No, Third, Third Avenue? That, but now that you're making it a garage and it's changing, there are going to be windows or-
On the west side?
On the east side.
On the east side, okay.
I, I remember something.
Mayor, you have a good memory, because the west side does have a green wall on the ground floor going around, and-
Okay.
It may be in here, and they just extended the same treatment on the new building. So I'm going to see if it's in here, but the east side that Ms. Commissioner Johnson's referring to is this one, and that's what faces Third Street, so Delray Market is a little further down the street on the other side. The old, the SunTrust Bank Building, which has become PR1, is directly across the street. So this is what this building looks like. So this is the garage use over, over here. And again, you know, any comments that you make, we're listening, and we can bring that back towards SBRAB, and SBRAB will take final action, and this will appear as an appealable, so they'll, if, if it's not adjusted to where you're comfortable, there will be another opportunity.
But there was something, am I wrong? The mayor just triggered my memory that we had something about pictures or something, it wasn't just whatever, I see-
I don't know what was- There are display windows on-
East side is where people are going to be.
Right, so as you, okay, so as you leave Atlantic Avenue, you start walking south down the arcade, you're passing this new restaurant or retail space, depending on parking, and then there's a lobby entry here that now has a small area in front of it, a green area with trees. As you go here, you are right, Commissioner Johnson, I think that there was a treatment on the ground floor of the garage with display windows, so that there would be some interest, the exact same, I think, condition is extended along this, this small new piece that's been added into that.
Supposedly some kind of display windows or something-
So that you're not looking at a blank wall or cars.
Just a blank wall or-
Cars, yeah.
That'll spill.
Yes.
Okay, so back to the west side.
Okay, I gotta, I'm going to switch, so, hang on, because I didn't-
Has the trains shoot by?
Well, it's not the trains that are shooting by, because truthfully, the trains are very quick. It's the people who are across from the train tracks, and also the people who are heading east in their cars that look over, and now they have this just mammoth building that has no buffer to it, other than just a train track that's open most of the time, and down there. So there's the wall, okay, so there is some sort of a-
So this is the green treatment on the ground floor of the garage, and they've extended that into the new piece, and it's curving. And then the piece that has been added, it doesn't line the entire property line, it does pull away visually, so it's not as large as the property that was added. And then this is all of the facade for the office and the restaurant that was in, in place before. So yes, there's your green, the green wall.
There's really nothing directly across, maybe part of it, the rear of those businesses on the Atlantic, but there's nothing, according to your diagram, there are no buildings, there's no street, there's no, I've not ever gone.
I think Angelo's is right there.
Right.
But I'm saying there, I've not been on the patio of that restaurant, but I've been inside, and you cannot see outside. I don't remember being able to see outside. Walking, perhaps, if you're crossing on the south side of Atlantic Avenue, you're looking down, you're going to see something, maybe aesthetics that aren't good, but there's no building right directly across from it, but I do like the fact that you're trying to do something aesthetic.
Okay, and just back to the resolution with respect to the parking, I, I am with my colleagues, I understand that, yes, we can, we can approve the parking, but we don't have to approve the parking, that's a choice that we're going to make. It is, it is becoming more and more of a problem in the downtown, because everybody's taking in lieu, and when we get to that point, to my colleagues, when we're discussing this, it's a one-time fee. I mean, I can't imagine anywhere else where that, that actually happens, where for twenty, what, three thousand dollars, you've got a parking lot for the life of your building or whatever you're doing in it, so, in a downtown area. I think it's, it's, it's got to be revisited. So that's it, those are my comments. Anything else?
Just to remind, a Resolution zero-two-dash-twenty-three, if there's a motion, it would be to approve as amended for the two feet, two inches.
So moved.
Okay, we have to do it one at a time, though, right?
So, so move Resolution oh-two-dash-two-three.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Gassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution zero-nine-dash-two-three.
Second.
Call the roll.
This is hard.
Ms. Gassell?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
No.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, and see a building here before too long, it seems.
Mayor, those fees were established in 2017, I checked.
I was going to say, I knew I was around, but it's still time to really re, readdress this because-
Agreed, we'll put it on a workshop.
And can we do something at this particular time, or do we need to wait-
Thank you, guys.
For comments? Thank you, thank you so much. To talk about a workshop sometime?
Well, we'll talk about it.
Another, okay, comments, thank you.
All right, we're moving on to seven D, Resolution number twenty-two-dash-twenty-three.
This is for the property located at six-twenty-five, six-thirty-three, and six-forty-five West Atlantic Avenue. This is quasi-judicial.
Okay, and?
It's a waiver, it's a port frontage, it's to use a porch as a frontage type, so it's a waiver.
Okay, so, I'm trying to figure out where this is.
That's, I can tell you.
I believe it's in the west-
West market.
On, on the West Atlantic.
Three empty spaces, six west of it.
Gotcha.
Mr. Hatcher's.
All right, gotcha, all right, very good. So at this point, we're going to talk about the-
Exparte?
Exparte, moving from Mr. Mr. Boylston, this way.
None.
Anything? None for me.
None.
Not anything on the server.
Yep, that would be the same for all of us. Okay, so, at this point- Mr. Zerdi, have you been sworn in?
No, I haven't.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and swear on anybody who's going to be speaking to this that has not been sworn in.
Oops, careful.
Will you raise your hand? By the authority vested in me as the notary of the state of Florida, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but this?
I do.
On the west side, it's the east, north side of Atlantic.
Anthea, you're up.
The deciding, you don't like on the side.
Yeah, 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 okay. Okay, so, please enter the project, file into the record, please.
Okay, I'd like to enter File twenty-two-dash-zero-nine-two into the record, and Mr. Zerdi's here at the presentation.
All right. Hello?
Good evening, yes, my name is John Zerdi, architect with LDG Florida Architects for this evening. Thank you for the time this evening, Mayor, Commission.
Thanks for your patience.
Oh, it's a lot better than some of the other nights.
All right, good. Good to hear.
Oh, this is where we're located. So it's, it's kind of on the west half of the block between Northwest Sixth Avenue and Northwest Seventh Avenue. It's on the north side of Atlantic.
The north side, okay, now, yes, all right, thank you. I'm trying to figure this out on the south side, I got it, yep.
And, and, there's a, there's a reason why we're here tonight, for the waiver, a request for the porch, because it is on the north side, and the building's main exposure for retail with all the glazing and all faces south. There's just a survey that we have, there used to be buildings there a while back, a number of them were demolished over time. Staff has a very good report on all of this, timing of the previous building, but it's vacant at this moment. And September twelfth of this last year- Staff has a very good report on all of this, timing of the previous building, but it's vacant at this moment. And September 12th of this last year, DDA, we presented to them and we we look at this project as being an important one to bring people more to the west side of town and they voted 5-0 to recommend and approve this eventual site plan with the waiver. Again, this this is an area that is getting more and more attention as projects move more to the west. This is again between 6th and 7th, diversity, historic heritage, and promoting more of these things in your your early master plan now, it's a long time ago. But we're going to take this void of a vacant parcel and fill it in. We want to create a vibrant pedestrian experience, so it's going to be shaded. We're proposing it to protect you and be more welcoming than the kind of the typical storefront that could go there, we'll have pictures of that, instead of that. So it's a mixed-use building, we'll give you a little more information there, but it does promote and encourage this with this porch idea does break down the scale of perception as you go along the road there, walking along Atlantic. And it complies with some of the goals as well as your LDRs. Parking's in the rear, we're removing some curb cuts, we're going to eliminate some of the other parking that may have been there before. Some of the other ones will comply eventually when those adjacent parcels do get redeveloped, so the parking is in the back. Tonight, we're here for the porch request waiver and we we went to SBRAB on this waiver previously. They unanimously recommended it 6-0 here in December the 14th. Just for the context of tonight, the waiver is for the porch frontage. It's a three-story mixed-use retail along the street and the second, third floors office office space. In this particular project, we do provide all the parking on site. 23 spaces are required and indicated on our site plan. This is basically the site plan. Tonight, we're going to focus a little bit on that area that's colored kind of an orange tone that's labeled porch. It wraps around the building because it's this is lots, again, a corner lot, so it's unique in that sense where we have a responsibility for people driving eastbound to present the building not as just a simple facade facing Atlantic, which a lot of infill projects may be, but it turns the corner. It's on Atlantic, so we have issues with FDOT as well, of being able to put any kind of a covered, nice walking area on on FDOT right-of-way. We're also going to be adding some decorative lights. We on our exploration there of our photometrics, it needs a little bit of extra lighting there, so we're going to put the typical style lighting that you require at the city. This is a picture of the project that shows it's a Masonry Modern style. We've had some good meetings with the community in the area as well, feel that we've got some good support to bring this on its in and on the corner, you've got the arcade-type look, but it's a porch because again, we can't go into the street. This is looking more where you're turning the corner, going and seeing the full facade on Atlantic. Again, it's it's got an interesting use of facade and sunscreen techniques as well with the porch, making it a really a very identifying project in its own right. And I think we have a short animation, just a little one to give you a better feel for it as you approach the project. Great, thank you. Again, coming around on 7th Ave, again, limiting the access to the parking in the back with just an entrance only, not a two-way in and out that narrows the view into the back portion. We have some of the parking that's covered. And as we rotate around back to the Atlantic side, you can see that one of the things, this was a rendering animation that was done prior to us being able to lower the finished floor of the building because it's only six to 12 inches above the sidewalk now. The animation is showing it a little bit higher than that. Thank you very much, yes. And we also have more from the recommendation with the DDA as well. They asked us to open up more accessibility with some rate, you know, open the steps up, so we will have a slide or show you that we have like nine openings pretty much everywhere. And the only areas that aren't open are where the columns are, we have a planter there to grow some nice plant material landscaping in that location. Great, so the yellow or the orange are the accessibility locations where you can go straight from the sidewalk to protection under the porch area, which is on our prop on the property of the project. And so there's 11 designated access points. I think when we first presented it to DDA, there might have been like six or seven. So they asked us to make them bigger and more often, which which we have. Just a little bit on the second and third floor, we've got office space proposed, two stairways. We've analyzed this for the future life safety issues as well, so this should stay current in in terms of what will this eventually come back to SBRAB for the full approval. Third floor is also office space and we do have some roof protection for our equipment. We've got seven-foot-high parapets that will fully hide all the AC equipment in the project. So that's kind of the proportions of it as it relates the porch to these elevations. And in terms of compliance with your streetscape, the porch frontage also doubles and complies with it as well. So looking at it more closely, that's a more accurate rendering there of the corner where you have just a 12-inch difference. So you have one step that you step on, but two risers. It's the minimal. And as you go more to the east, it's just one step. Some of the other projects, as you go more east on Atlantic, have a more drastic elevation change on the street. Some, we'll show you a few others that are even much more, but this is still pretty negotiable. And as far as ergonomics go, having a six or 12-inch difference between one level and another really is not something that would distract you or discourage you from just easily walking into getting some protection. So the access points are there, pretty much the worst-case scenario is 12 inches. And one of the things that why we're here tonight is because the frontage type either can be storefront or arcade as it's currently in your code. And this has come before you, very similar to another project that we were here in front of you last year, as well as the same situation occurred for the Sunday Village also on Atlantic, more to the east and on Swinton. So you can't choose either one of those because neither one of those actually absorbs a level change from the sidewalk to the building. But this is not as significant as some of the other ones and the arcade cannot be placed in the right-of-way, so we feel this is again, a good solution as we've presented before. A little bit different information for you this evening is that both of these accomplishes the same objective as an arcade would. In fact, it probably is even a little more favorable because you've got some width if you choose to stop and look at things at retail, you're not stopping and making people walk beyond you, maybe outside if you're on a true arcade, you might even have to go around them. And like I heard some tonight, you don't want them walking out into the street or the curb area. So this this is going to still work very well. Some of the shortcomings of that we have seen already and and this is just to the east of the project there around 3rd. This is a storefront, three-story kind of monolithic scale and massing. You can see how they've negotiated some of those level changes. It's pretty, could be some trouble there negotiating some of this. And if you had some storefronts there where you're coming in and out and maybe you're trying to get there with some aid of a wheelchair or something else, it's a little bit, could be a little tough tough. And you negotiate on a sloping road, you can see one of those, let's see, here, you got one step and as you go down, all of a sudden, you have these two steps. We really think that how we negotiate this level change is a much better, safer one to accomplish it, plus it protects your merchandise inside from the UV as we've mentioned previously. And in the code, there's really no provisions in there for any level changes. It talks about how far you are, we couldn't get to the curb because we can't be on the in the right-of-way for FDOT, so I repeated a couple of times already. Again, just a graphic, we have a six-inch slope, a level change and a level, six-inch level change on the eastern end. And it's it's a very mild level change comparatively speaking, as opposed to some of the other level changes to the far east part of town, which really do create a true sense of separation. However, the porch frontage does give us a floor elevation change. It can go from a half a foot to four feet and we're from a half a foot to one foot. And I know this is predominantly more in residential, but we've it's been executed in terms of a way to negotiate this unique condition on Atlantic Avenue already twice. So if we were looking at an arcade, we are not allowed to put that in the right-of-way. So we're still complying with all the commercial streetscape requirements as well and the requirements for the porch are accommodated as well. We feel as you're walking up, you really will see kind of a two-story building instead of a three-story solid facade that's there. All the other requirements that deal with the porch, between 40% and 100%, we're really wrapping around and making in a continuous experience to at least help allow people to turn the corner and go to to the north along 7th Ave, make their way and keep on walking. That's an enhanced right-of-way as well that we're showing there with another on off on-street parking space that we're going to add as well to this. And those again are the multiple areas that we can accommodate anybody from the street coming in and two sloped ramping, they're very, very mild ramps, but still negotiating from the sidewalk to get onto the porch. It's just another graphic here showing we do comply with the streetscape. We have a four-foot curb zone and a six-foot pedestrian zone and you really aren't going to really having, you know, things out there in your way. So we think that it's a good way to to deal with this. Staff will give you obviously their report here and Thea will talk about that we have waiver findings in their analysis that we won't adversely affect the neighboring community or the buildings next door will actually have to comply if they ever get redeveloped. We're not adversely affecting the neighborhood or the public facilities and won't diminish the provision. Certainly, I think it's going to be a safe, a safe application of this. And it's not unique anymore in that sense, but it is unique to the fact that it's on Atlantic Avenue and it's a it's a good solution to create the same kind of welcoming shaded spaces we do on some of the east projects as well. So overall, the the project we think fits well with the commercial uses that are proposed, that we are going to work with FDOT, the FDOT, again, for the other things that we have to deal with, trees that we're adding and lights and that we don't really interfere with the connectivity of the streets and sidewalk network. In fact, I think we'll we'll propose it's it can enhance it. So we think that the waiver will don't doesn't reduce the quality of the civic spaces. It complies with the like and the porch has to have a eight-foot maximum setback and encroachment, which it does in our drawings and that it meets all the streetscape requirements as well. Appreciate your time tonight and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so project is in the central business district and I think at this point you're aware that Atlantic Avenue and Pineapple Grove Way have required retail frontage on them. And so with that, they are intended to be very high-quality pedestrian streets, a lot of lively, active uses to support our downtown businesses. And as such, they are held to basically two types of frontage. The classic storefront frontage with a storefront window with awning overhangs, signage, other things that, you know, make a traditional main street. And then an arcade which extends over the sidewalk. It quite purposely does not want that parallel route so that you don't want your customers to be able to skirt your windows. You want to be sure that they walk past your windows and so, you know, what you have catches their eye. These are the two types. The issue that we have had, and this is a third request, it's come before you with the same issue on West Atlantic, is that West Atlantic Avenue is not a local road, it is controlled by DOT and therefore the arcade type that you just saw on the PR2 in the part of Atlantic that the city controls, you know, can have the arcade extend over, but if you're on a DOT property, that's not something that they're going to be acceptable, that they're going to find acceptable. So we keep having, you know, staff is quite honestly jokingly calling these parkades because we keep having these, they want to be arcades, but they're but they're set back, they're not within the public right-of-way and they're almost always also struggling to absorb a change in grade. You know, our partners, the DDA, have seen every one of these, they have written memos explaining their concerns, which of course is to keep it to the grade as much as possible, eliminate as many steps and barriers. But ultimately, I'm bringing this up because I think we need to think and maybe we don't need to decide tonight, but we need to think about where we're going with this with this type and the treatments of the building, whether it's truly better to have these open-air elements in front of the buildings or whether just the traditional storefront setback would be better. So they have pluses and minuses, they do some of the same things, they're both provide a desirable village by the sea character, they protect shade from sun and rain. The difference again, like I just explained, is like the customers kind of bypass stores. Sunday Village received one of these waivers, but they were using it more as what a porch is traditionally geared toward, which is something of an outdoor room, right? So it was outdoor dining, it wasn't the corridor that your customers were walking through. In this case, you have a generous streetscape that the applicant has made sure to provide, the six-foot clear zone, the four-foot curb zone for trees, lights, other things. There is a 10-foot setback and the porches cannot encroach more than eight feet, so there's all of this is occurring on private property as opposed to an arcade that comes out over. And then it's the same thing as you turn the corner. And so, you know, this provides some of those sort of semi-public-private spaces, it provides that shade, it's just a bit different. So they it's it's been fully analyzed in terms of requirements and we're finding it meets the porch requirement, it's just not an option typically on required retail. So again, it's a two-story porch where you can walk out onto the third, creating, you know, that that environment along West Atlantic and then something very similar along Northwest 7th. And so ultimately, to use this frontage type and not just a traditional storefront with a wide streetscape, you have to make findings whether or not they are going to adversely affect the neighborhood, create something unsafe, is it a special privilege, all of those, and then as well, the CBD criteria about not creating an inferior pedestrian experience or creating significant incompatibilities. Is it eroding connectivity and is it reducing a civic open space? Those are the findings before you. This did go to the the DDA reviewed the parcel, the project as whole and the memo is attached. There's again, the ongoing concern about visibility into the retail spaces. Waivers to central businesses should go to SBRAB and they provided a recommendation of approval as well, 6-0.
Very good, thank you very much. Anybody in the audience would like to speak to 7D, resolution number 22-23? Your name, address and three minutes.
Good evening, Christina Morrison, 1,000 Lowry Street in downtown Delray Beach. Just want to make sure you realize that this part of Atlantic Avenue is very wide. It's four lanes, plus there's a center island, so having and there's less trees than there are on East Atlantic, which is only two lanes and tree-lined at this point. This building will provide a superior pedestrian experience because it'll be a covered walkway. It'll create a beautiful environment on West Atlantic, which is sorely needed. I think the architect has done a superior job in handling the changes in elevation, the wideness of the street and creating a very beautiful pedestrian experience with with what he's done here, so please, please approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Do we have any cross or rebuttal testimony by either the? by either the applicant or the staff? No? Okay. So to the commission.
I have a question, just so I can understand this, Vianthea. What is, I mean, other than just adjusting for this, um, you know, change in, in topography or, you know, is there another reason to do this, this way? I, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing from, um, from the applicant's representative or the, I guess he's, you're the architect too, right? Okay. Um, that this is more of an adjustment to be able to give some covered area and also to adjust to a difference in, in the level, how, how it slopes off six inches. Are they able to bring that, if they were to do just a storefront, would it be just below that second floor, or is there a setback even further? Just curious. You know, where the porch is. So in other words, if you just brought the second story down to where, to where the porch is and you incorporate it into inside, yes, you're able to do that?
Okay. So if you can, the, the image that you see on the screen above, right, this is the building wall. This building is actually set back just a bit more than the ten feet, and, um, Mr. Zerdy can give you the exact, um, dimensions. So, but it's close. I think it's, it's a setback like twelve, I think? Yeah, it's, it's right in there. So because they are keeping everything in their structure. So if they just had the facade come down, um, all of the open-air elements would change. I mean, you wouldn't have the columns coming down in front of the porch, in front of the building. Uh, you would still be allowed to have balconies extending a certain amount, not as much. But yes, the building would just, it's more that the open-air elements would come off and the, and the building might shift forward, uh, like a foot and a half to two feet towards the streets. Um, and, and that's part of why it's a waiver, right? The question is, is it, is it more interesting or less interesting or superior, however you want to look at it, architecturally, to have these open-air elements on the front of the building? Are they adding or subtracting from where we're trying to go? This is typically not an arrangement we want to see on our main streets because, you know, the customer that's up here, that's great, but these customers are down here and, you know, so you typically, you want to bring them towards the building. However, the great, the great difference is real because when you look at Atlantic Groves, Atlantic Grove, Rosiri, and, you know, there is a little bit of a break that's happening in this, in the sidewalk, and that's not ideal either.
Well, I have to tell you, and that is even more from, I, I, I think, um, you know, it was, it was, you could see it. It's more cumbersome, and, and it's such a small amount of space that, you know, someone may feel like they could walk on it, but then fall right off of it because there's really not enough room to walk on it. Where this is a true walking space. This, you can walk down this like it's, as if it's a sidewalk or a porch area versus what you're doing up there. So, okay, I, I, I get it. I, I just wanted to kind of understand.
And there's ten, there's more than ten feet in front of where the structure starts, so the streetscape's intact.
Anyone else? I don't understand your motion. Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to, I'm, I'm sure you have it. I saw one of your, um, clips that show the building. Where are the ramps? I don't want to.
There's one here. Right here. There was one down on the other side.
Right. Just one.
One on either end.
I'm just saying, if I'm in a wheelchair, I'm halfway down the block. I've got to go all the way around.
No, you got to go right back into the back and then come up of the building.
I'm just saying, is it possible that you can have more than two in a building of this size? And after, before you answer that, the second question is, did I see parking on the ave? I am thoroughly.
There is parking there.
So that's where you're going to put some of your parking?
There exists parking.
She's shaking her head.
No, there's existing parking there, but Mr. Zerdy's not providing it.
But remember, our purview today is just the porch. That's all we're considering.
Sorry. So all of these?
So these spaces are here already.
When you're coming down, you can go up and over.
Seven, this is a new space on Seventh. If you've got a, if you've got a site that you can show her better.
I think that was. Yeah. Here we go back. Which, where were you on the site plan here? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, just wanted to.
Just more.
So if you're coming, walking this way, I know, here's.
I'm in a wheelchair.
If you, you come right in here and you go on up, or if you're coming from along the sidewalk to the building, you come up right here and come in.
Approximately how long is the, um, entry from the east end of the building? I've, it just doesn't appear to be enough, that's all. I'm.
We're only really required to have one.
You're only required to have one? Oh, so that's so sad.
But we feel that, um, people even coming, coming from the parking area too, they can in the back get access as well, from the sidewalk, from the, from the east side as well.
So what, what I'm seeing and you're saying to me is there is no, um, adequate ADA, you've just one end in, in the parking and one end on the other end. So I'm, again, the porch and all of that.
It's adequate. It's, it provides for the regulations.
And we're not even discussing it. So thank you.
It's not, it's not for today.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
I want to think about it when it is for the day.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-three.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Yes.
Good luck. Thank you very much. All right, seven E, discussion and direction regarding the annual maintenance and operations of the Palm Beach County, um, courthouse parking garage. Mr. Horace.
Good evening again.
Still here, huh?
Still here.
With us.
Doing my best to, to stay with you.
All right, good.
Jeff Horace, Assistant City Manager. This item before you is, it came to our attention that the county was awaiting payment for a, uh, a, a portion of the operations and maintenance for the parking and parking garage over at the South County Courthouse on behalf of the library. Uh, it hit my desk and I, of course, went to, to find out where the authorization was to go ahead and do this, and I could not find any document that authorized the city to make this payment. It was not something that was in our budget, nor is it something I could find in any of the agreements we had with the library. I did a little bit of research to find out.
Welcome to Delray.
Well, we, we did some research because we want to find out if we're expected to pay something, why we're supposed to pay it. Uh, I did some research, did find out it does appear that the city has paid this expense since, uh, since it was, uh, first put on the books back in the, the two thousand and aughts. Uh, however, I could not find any authorization for it. Um, I actually did do some history. I did reach out to the library. Kay Johnson's Development and Community Services Director there, and I had a lengthy conversation. She shared a number of emails. There were some questions about this in the past. Uh, there were some documents she did have to share. I then went a little bit more historical. I did reach out to former city manager, Mr. Harden, as well as Bob Barsinski, former Assistant City Manager, and Diane Colonna, the former CRA Executive Director, because they were all in place at the time some of those agreements came in. None of them could recall anything specific to this. Uh, I then did get from the county some copies of documentation, which is in your backup, showing information that they had billed us and we had paid it. I confirmed that with finance. You have information back to about two thousand and fifteen showing what we had paid. The library is able to produce more. I did not want to share with you more unless I could corroborate it somewhere else. And I, 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 our records, uh, weren't detailed enough to do that, and the county didn't have anything more. So we did establish that we had paid some. What was at question at this point is no payment had been made for FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, and no payment, we, the county had found that during an audit that no payment had been made back in two thousand and seventeen. So there's three outstanding invoices that total up just a little bit more than a hundred thousand dollars at this time. Discussions with the library are that certainly they've not paid it, and they, they expect and, and would hope that we would continue to pay it. Um, I don't want to take up too much of your time. If you have questions, I'm more than happy to do it. I can tell you that there are representatives from the library here, if you want their take on things. Uh, Ms. Johnson's here, as well as Michael Banta, the Executive Director. John Callahan, the former Director of the library is here. I believe he can give you some historical perspective if you want that, uh, as well as, um, uh, Kim Bennett, the, the President of their Board right now. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. I don't want to go into a long diatribe with all sorts of other things if you don't want me to.
So I, question, um, how is it being paid previous? We've paid it in the past, obviously. We just have missed two years now, and then there was a missing year in seventeen. How was it paid in the past? Did we have a line item? How was it?
It came out of a parking facility's line item, as best as I can tell. Could not find any documentation that actually said this is a city responsibility. The library did put forward some documentation that I could not otherwise verify. I'm not saying it's not true. I'm just saying I wanted to bring to you everything I could verify from multiple sources that showed that in, I think it was twenty twenty, it was actually in a budget and we had paid for it from there. But as far as I know, other than that, it has not come to the commission for approval.
Okay, so was the parking garage there before the, the, um, library was built?
No. It, it, I don't believe so. I believe it all kind of came together.
It was, it was there before.
Okay, then.
Okay, so did we ask the county, I, I know this is going to be hard for you to answer, maybe, did we ask the county for access? Because we've got a whole parking lot behind it. So I'm wondering, did we ask the county and then they said, sure, but you're going to pay for the access?
This is part of all that. It was, it, this is operations and maintenance. We talk about it as the parking garage, but it's parking garage and the surface parking. Um, it's all on county property.
Oh, okay. The surface lot is county also.
And they're maintaining it and doing, and they, they do have, the invoices we have, I've given you a copy of the ones that are outstanding, do have justification. They show all their expenses and then the responsibility is for basically one, one-third of that cost.
And, but we don't have access to that garage only during the times that they have it open, correct?
Right. That was part of the tri-party agreement for there, that we were, we would have access for, uh, a certain number of days during the year, which we would have to request, and we could only charge a certain amount to park in that site.
Okay.
When is the, in the twenty twenty budget worksheet where you have the library parking lot maintenance forty thousand, what is the Palm Beach County Garage maintenance thirty-five? Is that the garage there?
That, that is my assumption. I could not tell you for sure.
Okay. In the same year you're talking about? Correct? So like seventy thousand of charges?
I'm not really sure what the charges are for.
But here's the thing. The library, look, at the end of the day, they weren't paying this. We're mid-budget. We can't ask the library to. We have to figure this out going forward, but for now, they have their budget. We have our budget. We can't ask them to incur this expense that they haven't incurred for years. But it is worth noting how we got to this place and why did it not continue on our budget? Why? We missed a year? Did something occur in that year that, that something changed? Contract became outdated? Do we know that we actually owe them this money, the county?
We have a, we have a lease with them, and the lease states that the county shall be physically responsible for the operation and maintenance of the parking facilities, and the library shall annually pay the county thirty-one percent of all onsite operation and maintenance costs, including capital renewal and replacement costs, utilities and security. That's why we're here, because there's this specific language in the lease that says it's the library's responsibility, but the past practice of the city has been to pay it. So we have to resolve the conflict, and we're just getting direction from the commission because if you do want to take over the payments that we've allegedly been making, we would need to amend the lease so that going forward, everybody's clear on what the expectations are.
When we monetize that parking lot, those funds go to us.
When we what?
Monetize it. Monetize.
I think a portion of it does. We do temporary, uh, use agreements with the library. Missy would know better than me.
I, I, I'm with the, with Commissioner Sal in speaking that I don't think this is something that needs to be the library's responsibility. I think that it really does have to come to us. But I think it's a great opportunity to be able to maybe go back to the county and find a way to be able to maybe even open that parking garage up to more access for, for us, even if we have to pick up a little bit more of the cost. Um, we could possibly make it up with, uh, you know, parking fees or whatever. But I'm just thinking out loud that that garage is closed at, at, at times when this city could really use, um, in evenings when we're having events. Um, it would be great to be able to have a relationship with a parking garage that already exists that we're not even gaining access to. So I think it opens up a great opportunity to discuss, but I'm not sure that, uh, I, I don't, I don't feel like it's, 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 uh, it's something that we need to be changing, other than maybe the lease agreement, that this is something that the city needs to take on.
I agree with the mayor.
You said something about charging. I don't think we can make that decision since it belongs to the county.
Well, I, it, it would be in the negotiations. I mean, I'm saying that this is an opportunity for us to really kind of speak to them on maybe taking a little bit more of, um, having a little bit more of access to that.
I would, I would just caution you about using charging because they might take offense.
If, if not.
It's the county, it's the courthouse. You can't, you shouldn't.
But if we're, but if we're, but if we're paying for fifty percent of the use of it, um, I think that they would be a little bit more open to, okay, well, while you're having events and you're charging twenty dollars to come in and park, this part.
So you're going to talk about having it manned?
Yeah. Well, I mean, we would have to if we were doing that, if we were doing a charging type situation. But my thoughts are, it would be a great opportunity to try and.
Negotiate.
Yeah. See, we can get a little bit more access there.
So the direction today is to amend the lease, so that will have to be brought back to you, and then, um, start a conversation with the county concerning our shared use of that garage.
And also, could you just look into what that additional thirty-five thousand is as well? Thank you.
And, um, where you can get those funds is, we got a lot of in-Lufi's, I understand, that we've been getting over the years, so that we're not in a situation where, you know, we're having to go into the general fund and.
Be nice to get a report.
And cut something else out. Take a look at that.
Be nice to get a report on those in-Lufi's.
So there will be a budget amendment that's coming before you?
If I may, if we're talking about budget amendments, I just, uh, this may come up in a, in a future discussion, but I wanted to bring it up because it's a little concerning. I was speaking with you, speaking with the chief regarding, um, budget, our budget, when we were talking about those Knox boxes and the cost. No, no, I know it's not, but we're talking about a budget amendment, and I, I would like to just bring this up so everybody can think about it.
Can we do it during comments, during Commission?
I'll do it during comments.
Yeah, I think it's better. All right, so do we have a motion to?
I don't think we need a motion.
You don't? That was your discussion on this?
And then, um, great. Is everybody clear?
I think we got it.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, very good. Nine A, ordinance number zero, zero-four dash twenty-three.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations of the City of Delray Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter One, General Provisions, Article one point one, Adoption of Code, Section one point one point six, Amendments, Modifying the Procedure for Privately Initiated Amendments. See the Land Development Regulations, amending Chapter Two, Administrative Provisions, Article two point four, General Procedures, Section two point four point five, Procedures for Obtaining Development Approvals, subsection M, Amendment to the Land Development Regulations to Require Sponsorship by a Single Commissioner in Order to Appear at a Commission Workshop and to Require Support by at least three members of the City Commission at a Workshop Meeting in Order to Submit a Privately Initiated Amendment to the Land Development, I should say Regulations. Providing a Conflicts Clause and Severability Clause Authority to Codify and Providing an Effective Date. This is first reading, so there's no presentation. You may recall this is, um, based on Commission Direction.
Motion to approve.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Gassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
All right, very good. We're to comment and inquiries on non-agenda items. Mr. Moore?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
God bless you. City Attorney.
Wish I could say the same. Two quick things. Um, I did speak to each of you about the, um, Gleason Street Appeal. Uh, Judge Fuhr entered an order denying the city's motion for summary judgment. I'm just seeking, um, consensus from the commission to allow me to appeal it. Um, I did speak with an appellate lawyer. We handled it in-house, so no money has been spent on it. But I did speak with an appellate lawyer who did have some concerns about the court's, uh, reasoning and her ruling. And, um, I just, I feel very strongly that we should probably, just so that we don't establish some type of a precedent with these permits, um, move forward with an appeal.
Do you want a motion?
Um, sure. So you can just, um, a motion to approve, uh, the city attorney, um, moving forward with an appeal.
I'm moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Gassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Um, well, second thing, I believe Dr. Davidine had spoken to each of you. Um, there was a Parks audit that was requested by, I think, Commissioner Johnson. Um, in her conversations with you, I think her concerns, um, were made aware to you. What she would like to do is work with Parks to develop some policies, work with the manager to develop some policies, and what her goal would be in maybe six to twelve months, once, once policies have been established, to test them at that point. Um, her concern right now is that because there's no, um, set policy in place with how we deal with these outside vendors with Parks, um, the audit would be, um, I'm not going to say a waste of time. I don't think it's going to come up with the results that the commission thinks it is. Um, and so she asked me to bring it up, um, before you, and, um, because she does need a majority of the commission by vote. Um, if you want to vote to allow this direction instead of a full-blown audit, that is her request.
All right, I'm.
I have a question. You're telling me that there is no rule, regulation, process, procedure for someone renting our fields?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that different vendors are handled differently, and so we need to establish. and so we need to establish one uniform system. And, and I will say this, some of the issues that led to your concerns were the result of an employee who, who wasn't well, and who's no longer with us. And so while that's not an excuse, and
It's always the difference.
It's, it's part of the issue with why the department was suffering. And so, you know, I can't make excuses, but I can tell you that her, in her macro viewing of this, her concern is that she would rather work to establish some protocols that are gonna be consistently applied, allow the department to, to apply them, and then in six to twelve months, she will go and test them to see if the department's doing what they need to do as, as a result. At the end of the day, I don't know if there's any recourse, I, I did speak with her about it. I don't know if the city can go back and if there's gonna be any recourse to the city because we didn't do this. And so.
So with these set procedures in place, there will be recourse in the future, because basically now you have set procedures that are not being followed, in which case someone can be held accountable versus we don't really have that, and everybody was kind of treated differently, which is not, not acceptable, but it is what was happening before.
Right, I, I think we have different, different systems in place and different ways that we address it, and so we need to come up with one uniform way to address everything. Everybody hopefully will be able to be addressed in that fashion, and then yes, there, there will be consequences.
Like procurement, has a certain thing that goes on and you have to follow those rules.
Ideally, yes.
We did already, but someone comes in to rent a space, you have to fill out a form, and you pay it, but I guess that is not what was happening, is what you're saying.
That's not, I'm not saying that, I have not done the investigation, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that the audit would not reveal any types of results that would lead the city to be able to take any action. And without set, what an auditor does is she takes the policies that are in place, and she tests them, and she sees, you know, how they're being applied. When you don't have uniform policies, there's nothing for her to do except to tell you, you need a policy. And so that's why she wants to work with the manager and work with Parks in order to establish those protocols, so that then in a, in a, the near future, she can test them.
And not only if there's a policy and a procedure, but if someone is ill, they're not held responsible for what goes on when they're not physically there. That's also a part of the process, not just something to follow, someone responsible.
Yeah, yes.
Should be a part of it, is all I'm saying.
So there's that, right, but.
Well, it, it should go up the chain of
Agreed.
demand, so if somebody's not there, that's the next person up.
So because there was direction with a, you know, to conduct an audit, we are asking to, for the commission to vote.
Put something in place in order to audit.
Yeah.
There you go. Took the words out of my mouth.
I'm good with it.
Me too.
I'm gonna need a vote because the charter requires a majority.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Gassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Anything else? All right, to the commission. Mr. Boston?
Yes, I will, I will start off. First, I would like to apologize, it was glass, not plastic, that is.
Yes, not being recycled, yeah, because there was a lot of plastic that was bundled up.
I misspoke, I misspoke, it was glass. I would like to bring up a private initiated LDR amendment from the Beach Property Owners Association. Because of scheduling issues, they weren't able to make it on today's workshop. Ms. Jellin and Mr. Moore said it would be appropriate for me to bring that up today, and of course, I will be gladly, will be happy to sponsor that as well and move that forward. And it's in, in relation to build home height, building height in.
Overgrown homes.
Overgrown homes is
Okay.
is the term that's being used.
Overgrown homes, I brought this up
Oversized homes.
a few months ago regarding, you know, the impacts of the
I'm fine with that.
So today, it needs, as a sponsor, I know normally that happens during a workshop, but they.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Me too.
Just for the record, the only reason why we're doing it this way is because it was brought up previously and it's on the list, so.
Right, good.
I tried to make that
You did, I just wanted to clear.
Also, and this is my, my last item, I would like to see if there is any interest with my colleagues to put on a future workshop discussion in regards to a, and this might be a strong word, moratorium on allowing property owners to rezone for hotel use. I do not restrict anyone that has already per, has a property, that they can build a hotel. But looking at Delray Beach, especially now we're in season, I think someone was mentioning being, being out on Atlantic Avenue, we really are at a tipping point. We don't want to be a tourist-driven, driven town.
I think we missed that.
Is that, is that, can we do that, though? I mean?
So I've had, I, I would never bring anything up without having a conversation with our, our attorney beforehand.
But, but let me ask you a question.
We've had so many hotel rooms, plus the rise of Airbnb and Verbo. I, I think it's really, really important that we focus on people living and working here, and not people just staying, obviously, in hotels or temporary housing.
So let me just say this, you know, it's really interesting that we would be a governmental body that's kind of deciding that we're not gonna have any more hotels, when hoteliers and anybody who's like an investor that's coming in to put one in would have to do the due diligence to know that they could fill their hotel, because otherwise it would be an absolute disaster. So I'm not so sure that I feel comfortable with that, so much as, you know, we can be pretty tough when they're coming in because they all seem to need something, and just say no if it doesn't feel like it fits.
Right.
You know, right now, we're looking at what we might be doing or might not be doing to, over at the golf course, let's say. That might be a place that makes a ton, a ton of sense for, you know what I'm saying, for a boutique hotel to be adjoining. So for us to do something like this, it might be cutting off our noses by our face in a situation that makes sense, whereas I get what you're saying.
Yeah, I am, I am requesting that this would be a
It's that time of night.
That this, that this would be discussed in a workshop, that workshop would most likely not be till after we've had the conversation in regards to the golf course. And then the workshop would eventually lead to any, you know, significant change, so this is something. So if, if there's not, if there's not a, not a consensus, Adam is giving it.
Have I to talk about it at a workshop?
I, I'm, I don't.
Doesn't need to be tomorrow, but I'm, I'm just overly concerned that we don't have the proper balance, and I just saw, South Florida Business Journal came out the other day, and our office vacancy is at four percent and, and dropping. So, and our restaurants that we do have here in, in Delray, they need a, they need people living here and working here that are utilizing their restaurants all day long, rather than just the nightlife economy, which obviously the increase of.
Hotelgoers utilize.
We can hear you speaking, so if you need to speak, if you could.
So I, I, I would just say that once you do tip that scale, it is very hard to wind it back, once you tip that scale of having a huge influx of tourism activities and, of course, hotels. We've seen throughout Florida, many, many cities battle that. I am a proponent for incentivizing, and, and again, if you already had a property where you can build a hotel, I, I, I am trying to say that if you don't, that, that I think we should make a stance that for a certain amount of time, you know, I don't know if it's a three-year period, that we really rather see office or residential people living and working here than hotels, so. But again, if I don't have two people that are interested in exploring that.
I'm, I'm, we're at a tipping point, whether we realize it or not.
Well, you have your two people, so.
Just so we're clear, we, three years is, is not gonna happen. You have to be, it's finite, so it has to be like much less.
Right, and that's the consensus.
We haven't had that conversation.
Right, that's, that's fine.
Have we talked about a moratorium?
A moratorium. That, that's what we're, the consensus is for, is to do the moratorium. Now Laura just reminded me that she is working on this tourism master plan, so I don't know how that plays into this.
Exactly.
I can bring the resol, I have to bring a resolution back before you for the moratorium, so. And do you want to limit it to areas? Because you can, you can limit it, so if you're saying, you know, east of ninety-five, or east of Swinton even, and we can make boundaries if that's the area that you're concerned.
I'd be more interested in doing that than I would be.
Yeah, east of ninety-five, for sure.
East of ninety-five, okay. So, you know, obviously the only limitation is we can't be arbitrary and capricious, so we have to have reasons why we're doing it. I think some were voiced today. I'll speak with staff, you know, if it's a tipping scale, you know, if you feel that the development is not what the vision was, and it's going too concentrated, I think that's a valid reason to do it, so.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll prepare it for you.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, but those are my only three items today.
All right, Commissioner Johnson?
I'm gonna try to be quick, Deputy Vice Mayor, I promise. Okay, start the clock, three minutes or less. I'd like to remind everyone, I sent an email out, Dolores's evaluation, annual evaluation. I know, it's something that, you know, we, we're occupied, preoccupied. Second, I'm a little disappointed about the Parks audit, et cetera. I did not know that we were in such a disarray of not having a process and a procedure, and that everyone is treated the same, and once there's not that, and we find that something's happening, we blame it on whatever. Anyhow, that's what are under the bridge, we're gonna get something eventually. And I'd like to add to Commissioner Boston's, we are just overrun with people because I think we had a wonderful, successful Christmas, Hanukkah, everything. My daughter visited, and she said, Mom, Delray's making money hands over fist. I said, are you kidding me? She said, no, people are everywhere. And I happened to go downtown, and there was this lady walking her big Afghan dog, and the dog was just having a good old time running around, and kids were kind of like, oh, I don't like that dog, and I'm not necessarily one, so. I said to the lady, in a kind way, I hope, we have an ordinance in this city, you must have your dog on a leash. And she said, I have it. In her hand, nicely folded.
That lady was on the beach on Sunday.
With the big white Afghan dog?
I showed you the video, and she, it wasn't on a
She's crazy.
Yes, it wasn't on a leash. On the sand.
No, she's.
I bet it's the same lady.
So I know that we can't have code enforcement everywhere, but I just think we.
Well, listen, I think that when they see it, they have to do something about it, and until unfortunately you start, you know, making it hurt, it's gonna continue to happen, you know, unfortunately.
Yeah.
I think it's a doodle, not an Afghan.
Yes, the dog, I don't know about the lady.
Golden doodle.
The dog.
No leash.
No leash.
I just hope she had a doggy bag.
Ah, well, that's another shit.
I didn't see a doggy bag, I just saw the folded up leash in her hand. My last thing, or second to last, is I'd like to propose something that I noticed while I was downtown. If it's possible, can we consider, or have someone agree with me, that we need to study this, a traffic discussion about cars that enter the little corridor between Swinton and the Federals? Is it possible that we can prohibit left-hand turns going east or west? That way, someone who's waiting, and we know it's a traffic jam, right? I want to make a left-hand turn, how I'm heading east on Pineapple Grove. There's traffic coming west, there's traffic going east, I'm gonna come to the intersection, I want to make a left-hand turn. Traffic doesn't stop, so it's, it's adding to our traffic.
Four-way stops?
We talked about it, is it time to revisit it?
I don't know, I don't think that's gonna, it's not gonna change a, a lot of matters, there's so many things that need to be done. I think it needs to be like overall looked at in a, in a very high-up, elevated view. I don't think that that's gonna make a huge difference, I think we have issues with people stopping to try to valet park. There's all sorts of things happening in that section.
We maybe roll it all into one and give it up.
The best idea is to just go the, you know, the auxiliary routes, and otherwise just plan on going very, very slow.
If we don't prohibit them from getting on Atlantic Avenue, then making a left-hand turn east or west, we're not going to mow the behavior of anyone who's using it.
I think you're still gonna have that congestion on East Atlantic, and people just recognize that and they still choose to go down it, because it's a see and be seen type situation going on down there. People want to be seen, and, you know.
But if you're prohibited from turning, and we have a wonderful police officer there to write a ticket, I don't want to be seen getting a ticket, so I don't know, maybe.
I don't think we're gonna resolve it here, but I think that it would be good for
Is there anyone else who's interested in one eventually?
Would that be like an off-season pilot program, where we
Maybe.
where we put some temporary signs, and we run it for three, you know, two or three months.
I think we have our biggest problem when it's on-season, but.
No, no, just to pilot, see what it's all about, see if it actually makes a difference. You know what I'm saying? That's what you could do, because to do something specific, when you don't know if it's really gonna make a difference.
Temporary, temporary.
I, I, I would, I would be in favor of getting the DDA's input on it and doing something off-season.
Try it.
And try it, yeah.
I would be too.
I'd try something.
So we, is this something that we're gonna ask the staff to come back?
We'll have to come back, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. And with that, welcome back.
Okay.
Cool, I have a few things. One, Coco Goth, she won the first WTA Tournament of the Year, so congratulations, Coco. And I wanted to thank all of my colleagues up here for the mirror lighting, the support for that. It was a wonderful, Sam, you and your, your team, Dolores, hopefully you're listening, everyone who I'm forgetting, Rabbi Shmuley, and it was spectacular. A little after four o'clock, we all got an email regarding the upcoming Delray Beach Festival of the Arts, always a popular event, but if you recall, I thought as a board, when we were discussing the Delray Affair and streets being closed, we weren't gonna close between the Federals on Atlantic Avenue. Well, according to this, road closure, Atlantic Avenue from Southwest Fifth Avenue to A1A. So that means, that's different.
Is this, you said Festival of the Arts, and then you said Delray Affair?
Yeah, Delray Affair, when we talked about it.
Yeah, okay.
And in particular, our first responders thought it was a lot safer if we didn't close up the block.
I didn't get this email, so that's weird.
In between, so they can turn, instead of having to go down and make a U-turn to get across the bridge.
Yes, so I think it's probably too late to do anything, but certainly the Delray Affair or whatnot. Yeah, it just, it's hard for our first responders.
Does this mean that something is planned and, does this mean that something's planned and scheduled through who, whoever is sponsoring it had to come through the process and get it approved, et cetera, in the city? So whoever that is does not know the rules and regulations for?
Well, it depends, I mean, if this board wants to have a policy, that that area is never closed.
If I may, I think that we did, we determined that because one of the bridges was not working. And that's why we said, but then we discussed we were going to finalize it potentially going forward, but I don't know if we actually ever finalized that.
Laura's shaking her head. And, and, and that was just a few months ago, and obviously these things are usually, you know, booked and planned way far ahead. I know Delray Affair is gonna be able to make it, that adjustment, but maybe, you know, I don't, I don't know who can provide.
It's, it's too late for this weekend, I'm sure they already have it all blocked out, and I get that, but I just think going forward, if that's the appetite.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Yeah, I think we all do.
We seem to have rules that we never follow.
Well, I mean, I, I think that, you know, the Vice Mayor brings it up, and, and again, we, we specifically talked about other things, and there were other issues, but I think that there is an appetite up here to continue it, so I'm, I'm in support, and I think that that's what we're directing, which I think is, is received.
Crystal Clear.
Got it.
Thank you.
And one other thing, which is my friend Ms. Johnson's favorite subject, Airbnbs. I spoke, met with our city attorney about this, and I wanted to present this to the board for their input. I think we can agree that they've exploded, not only here in Delray, but throughout the state, and many, including myself, believe that a countless number of these have a negative impact on single-family neighborhoods. I went on the Airbnb website for the first time today, and I searched Delray for a three-night stay, and there are over one thousand homes in Delray Beach listed as, including apartments, guest houses and cottages that are on this service for a three-night stay in the city. I brought up many years ago, charging a fee for this service, because it's a business, in my view. And I wanted to know if there was an appetite to put it on a future workshop, what we can do, what other cities have done, I just think.
Monetize it?
Yeah, I mean, I think we need money for code enforcement, for police to monitor these, these businesses, they're businesses. And, you know, if someone's doing a seasonal rental, I don't think they should be included, but if you're doing more than three, four times a year, that's a business.
Will it cost us to gather that information of who's doing it?
It shouldn't be, it's on, on, on the computer, it's such an easy, low, low-hanging fruit.
Those people are registered anyway with the county.
Well, I don't think they're paying
Not necessarily.
They're not paying the taxes.
Who's to say that?
I believe when you're applying on one of those websites, there's some regulation that relates to
What they're supposed to be doing.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I think if you're on a Craigslist or on some other site, I don't know, but I think, I think Airbnb and VBRO, whatever it is, have some kind of requirement that relates to your local rules. I don't know, but I don't, I don't disagree that we should monetize it if we're having.
We, we have fees for our, our, you know, alarm, to have an alarm in your We, we have fees for, um, our, our, you know, alarm, to have an alarm in your house, so...
Yeah.
I'd like to look into it and I, I think it's a good idea.
Deputy Vice, we're gonna have this, um, as a part of the League of Cities. We're constantly, it's been a battle and we are preempted from doing many things.
Exactly, so that's a great idea.
So I love it.
We're preempted from regulating the turnover and the duration, but we can regulate the impacts. So what I think Commissioner Frankels, Vice Mayor Frankel is proposing is that we, and remember permits are just cost recovery, so they're not, you can't monetize them.
Sure.
But you, you can collect those monies and turn them into funding positions to patrol, to mitigate the impact. So it's, you know, it's, it's circular.
Ms. Casal, or Deputy Vice Mayor?
Oh, okay, so super quick. I know I wanted to thank somebody, but it's been such a long night, I can't even remember. Sorry about that, so thank you all. Um, but, uh, Mr. Moore, one of the things, when we're talking about budget amendments, I was talking to the chief about the Knox boxes and you and I discussed this. Um, the chief indicated that there are a number of unfilled positions that won't be filled until July. And I think his number was approximately twenty, twenty-two. And the, uh, cost, uh, calculation was like $209,000 a month. So we're sitting on that money for ten months. And then potentially you're saying we're only gonna put ten employees into those positions. So I guess, but that's over $2 million of money budgeted for a department that is probably not gonna utilize it. I don't understand why we don't reverse budget that money out.
And recommendations evaluating that approach will be offered going forward. So the reason why there's a, an aggregate of 22 positions, and you and I talked about that, that actually corresponds with the service level with Highland Beach. What's being authorized is to fill about 12 positions. That's about the outcome that will be needed once that transition doesn't sue. So the data analysis is being compiled and we'll be offering recommendations accordingly.
So in July, eight less positions, but from now, from, from now to, oh, thank you, I'm sorry. From now to July, 209,000 per month, that's not being utilized?
Actually, that may be calculated going into May 2024 because our relationship with Highland Beach is until May 2024, so there will be an additional calculation to reflect that as well.
Okay, I guess my point, though, is we put an extremely large amount of mu, extra money into, thank you, are you coming up here? Take your time. Are you limping?
Yes.
Oh, wow, sorry. Hope you're okay.
So, uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Long night. Keith Tommy, Fire Chief. Uh, no, no worries, no worries. Um, one of the reasons why we have to keep those 22 positions funded is because we don't know that Highland Beach is gonna necessarily totally separate from us. That they're struggling right now and, and getting things done. The likelihood is, yes, they are going to, but anything could happen. And I'd hate for us not to be able to have those positions in our, in our system and funded in case they, uh, they decide that they don't and they want to renegotiate the contract and stay with us.
Okay, and that makes great sense, but we front-loaded the money into it thinking we may or may not need it. Why not front-load in from July on or May on?
So...
Why did we front-load eight to 10 months we don't?
We made a decision as people retired or, um, they quit or were terminated or whatever, not to fill those positions. Normally, we would fill those all the way through, right? I didn't want to lay off 22 people or, or eight people come May 2024. So that's why we kinda, we kinda balanced it out. We were watching it very closely. We really, really thought we had it timed perfectly with all the retirements and stuff like that to get us through to about May 2020, May 24, to, um, not have to lay anybody off. Though we'd have enough attrition that they would just go away. We wouldn't need that. But unfortunately, things have happened. We've had a lot of people leave to go to other fire departments. Um, and that num, that has now sped up that process to where we're now, we're 22 people short. Um, we do know that there's other firefighters that have applications in other fire departments right now, so there's a good chance that we'll lose another three to five more here in the next month.
Okay, and your answer makes perfect sense, but I think my question is directed to him because ultimately you present the budget to us. I understand his rationale, but you're putting money that you're not going to be using at a minimum until May, right? Two, 209,000 a month.
And which is why that analytics and recommendations will be forthcoming.
Okay.
Like a mid-year, like a mid-year budget adjustment?
Yes, sir. A mid-year budget adjustment or the closeout of the current fiscal year, not to mention the upcoming fiscal year, so all of it.
Well, I, yeah, I, I know that. I, I, I understand that we start with a budget gap, which isn't a real budget gap because we actually haven't started the budget yet. And then we end the year, we've been lucky the last few years, we end the year and that gap has completely closed or partially closed. And that is because of items like this, right?
Right.
But it's, um, I think that the concern is it's not realistic.
At all.
And we do have other needs.
Right.
And we do need to find funds, you know, for, for other topics.
It's substantial. It's not a, it's not $500,000. It's a couple of million dollars. So it's a substantial amount of money to be allocating to a department and, you know, knowing that they're not gonna be utilizing it.
Ladies and gentlemen, understood. That's the direction underway as I've just committed. So we will be bringing back considerations as I work with Delray Beach Fire Rescue, the Department of Finance, to take...
At the mid-year bu, is like a mid-year budget, is that what we can expect?
It would be a mid-year budget adjustment consideration or possibly a third quarter budget adjustment consideration as well because again, we're striking a balance on all fronts.
I, I feel like the, the adjustment should happen even sooner. I mean, you know you're not gonna utilize that money.
We just...
March, right?
I'm sorry, sir?
Mid, mid-year would be March.
The year would be, yes.
It's not that far away.
Yes. So in any event, we just had a discussion to this effect a couple of days ago, literally.
Yes.
My office with everybody involved, so again, that, that, that direction is underway.
Because I've been writing emails to that effect.
Oh, no, that's, no, it's actually before that. It's actually before that because...
Not to dispute this with you, but anyway, I think we should drop that at this point and move forward.
Which we are.
I think it's not a good practice to be padding the department to that extent. And then we're asking ourselves, well, why, we're, we're gaining tremendous revenues this year and yet our expenses are increasing so much. There are ways we could utilize that money, serious ways, that we need money. You know, we might have revisited the freebie differently and expanded it throughout the area of the city, which I think was, it's totally unfair that we didn't do that. And one of the considerations was, well, we don't have the money. Well, but we do, actually.
Actually, we don't. If we don't have 22 positions filled, we're filling that with overtime. So the money that we're saving in the, in those salaries are all going to overtime.
You told me you have 209,000 extra dollars per month.
It's called a salary savings, so you have a salary savings of about 200,000 a month on those 22 positions. But at the end of the year, I'm gonna run, I'm gonna run out of overtime monies probably about mid-year. So we take that money that we're not using in, in the salary savings and we use that to make up the difference in overtime. And Hugh can probably explain it a lot better than I can, but that's, that's the basic way I understand it.
So why are we not just calling it overtime instead of calling it, uh, you know, putting it aside as if it's a salary?
Because you have overtime in one line, Adam, and you have salaries in another line.
Right, but what you're basically saying is at the end of the year, you're taking about 200,000, or 200, whatever it was, a month.
Or 2 million dollars.
And, and, and throwing it into overtime. It seems like that doesn't make sense. It's not transparent with what's really happening in the, in the department.
The, 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 the only way it's fund, the only way it's a savings is if we don't fill that position, those positions, right?
You're saying you're not going to until July and he's saying potentially May. That's my point. It's not that, I understand your practice. I'm not trying to give you a hard time, honestly. I understand your practice. I understand what you're saying completely. But what I'm saying to him is, excuse me, to Mr. Moore is, you're, you're putting money in there that you know you're not utilizing for that purpose. It's not how we should be doing it. Like, I have a problem with it. You understand what I'm saying?
Clearly, and therefore I'm comfortable with offering leadership and guidance to be straight in that regard and therefore the upcoming adjustments.
Thanks. We can, can, that, no, let's conclude the discussion. I appreciate the hearing, Laura.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've got a couple of things. Um, sorry, but I can't support. I just want to make sure that my colleagues are with me. It's, I, I, you know, as, as, as nice as he is, it's just not something that I think that our city is looking towards. And north of the bridge, please, you know, I just... Exactly, okay. So I just want to make sure that we're all on board because I don't want it coming back and saying, well, there was a person that came in and said that they wanted it, so here we go. Um, in-lu parking, $23,660 per space, one time, one time, and you got it for the lifetime of the building or whatever business you're doing. Way too low. And I know that we're gonna have that conversation, but I just want to point that out.
It may not, yeah, we may, we may decide it doesn't even exist.
Exactly, but if we, if it's going to exist, it's gotta be, it's gotta be an annual. I mean, they're, they're pay, they're paying for that one space forever.
I think we've just found that...
Yeah.
No matter what you raise it to, they'll pay it.
Well, because truthfully, and, and that is true.
Do we even want them?
But, you know, if that was the case, we should be building parking garages with that money versus basically just, you know, being on the cheap and then having everybody have problems with parking.
To even know where the money is is always my question.
Well, I'm sure it's somewhere. I, okay, Brant Bridge, did we determine that that's, uh, on the tray?
Brant Bridge, yes. So you and I recently had a dialogue about it, so Missy and I touched on base in that regard.
I'm sorry to have to get you up, but I just want to ask about that. Are we, are we getting there?
Brant Bridge is, by the way, the board of Boca Raton and Delray Beach, so...
And are we, are we doing a ribbon cutting soon?
Missy Barletto, Director of Public Works, yes, we're planning, we have tentatively planned the ribbon cutting for, I want to say it was either February 7th or February 15th.
All right, so we're gonna be crossing that bridge and...
Yes.
Very good. I just want to make sure.
It will not be on January 30th, though, which is in your calendar.
That's fine, that's fine. So we'll, we'll, we'll see it coming in February. Very good. Thank you very much. Tree cutting, that was brought up earlier. Um, I'm telling you, I, uh, you know, I don't know if you did speak to an arborist. There was a lot of questions from, uh, Gail Clark that I thought were very poignant, on point, um...
Adam Mayor?
Yes.
I will have an update to y'all in writing in the next couple of weeks via my information letter report. I'm looking at the January 27 piece.
Okay.
Because there are practices and protocols in place, being executed to utilize external services as outlined. So I'll offer progress in terms of where we are in that regard.
We're talking about leg, legacy trees on some of our, you know, sensitive properties, especially in the historic district. I think that if we're gonna be taking off a significant, you know, whatever, two-foot wide, three-foot wide, whatever it was, branch, I think it needs to...
Clarity and direction disseminate.
You got it, all right. Um, oh God, I can't even read my writing. Update on, oh my God, I can't even read it. Don't know. Anyway, Happy New Year, meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
I can't read it. I don't know what I wrote down there.